All right, welcome everyone. It is Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, and we're here at 120 Dougherty Street in Athens Clark County. For a couple of purposes, we have our normally scheduled work session gathering today. And then we have a special call session that will break forward as we're out. We now divide our work session items into items for future consideration around which we have the opportunity for any questions to be asked, and then items for future consideration around which we get a presentation to be followed by question. The first of our two questions only items is the fiscal '26 to '28 organizational strategic plan. This is, of course, an iterative document that rests upon work that we've done going back five years, but probably most acutely draws from work we did at our treat last year. And so you have that document in front of you along with some of the staff direction that will flow from this. So commissioners, any questions about this item?
No, it worked, Joseph.
I just have one question. One question. Going back when we first did the strategic plan, we talked about specifically how to kind of cut it down. It just seems that maybe I just didn't see.
So it's been pared down significantly in two ways. One, some strategies were combined into other strategies and then some strategies, which you all agreed were largely complete, were eliminated entirely. So we came down from six goals, 27 strategies, and 98 initiatives to, right now, the way it stands, what you have in front of you is still the six goals, but we're down, I believe, 16 strategies and about 53 initiatives, although some departments have expressed that they want to sneak a few things in, which I'll provide to y'all as an addendum in the next couple of days. But it would still significantly pare down for a year or twice.
And I guess my question really stems from we're facing, we're dealing with the deficit.
Yes, ma'am.
And so if we adopt these in any kind of way, will we still have opportunities to make modifications based on our budget? I guess that's what I'm trying to. Are these sealed in stone, or can we, is there some flexibility to?
There is certainly some flexibility. What I'll say is that new initiative requests and new position requests and largely capital requests were all tied in some way to the prior strategic plan, FY '23 to '25 plan. The new plan is kind of coming in alongside that existing plan. And so, yes, there may be, depending on what way the mayor decides to go with his budget, and based on the recommendations from the acting manager, it's probably, there are probably some areas where we will end up pared down initiatives based on what's selected and what's not.
Yeah, and what I would add to that is, so these are just signaling priorities, right? So we understand that resources are limited, but resources could become available even after the budget through like grant funding or other sources. So you're usually just signaling what these priorities are that the commission sees, and then work as best we can to work through resources that we have. So the budget's still ultimately in your hands. What we're doing is hopefully signaling both to our staff and to y'all what those priorities are and how the budget requests tie to those.
And if I may add one more thing. The tactical day-to-day work that departments conduct are independent of this plan, right? These are three-year strategic priorities. And so it may be that in year one, we don't have funding to accomplish some initiatives, but in year two or three, we do. So I think that's the beauty of a mid-range plan.
Okay.
I was gonna just mention that also when we have a new permanent manager, the guiding principles could be more priority and focused within, obviously with our coming in our back of board or that sort of thing too. So that'll come in as that happens, right? But I appreciate what you put together.
Yeah, I do appreciate it. I just wanted to have clarity on. I'm sorry, flexibility, flexibility, that's the word.
That's true. Commissioners' rights, point of view, same as I think. If we get a new manager, our priorities and our goal could shrink. And I think for me, you know, we're trying to make adjustments. I think once we get the mayor's budget, we start going through the cycle ourselves, we may come back and say, well, you know, probably what we need to really focus on. So what I'd like to see maybe moving forward, if it's gonna be a tight, you know, gonna be a tight budget year, maybe concentrate on two or three things that we really prioritize for our county, this community. Maybe try to concentrate on those things and move forward with the resources that we have. And that could be several things that may come out of this, but I think we may have to narrow even more our focus.
So this is a work in progress.
Always, yeah. I haven't voted on it yet, so yeah.
Okay.
Karen?
Yeah, I think Joseph just made the point that these are new initiatives, so I need a little bit of help here. Like the first one, on good neighbors, like 1A2 and probably 1A3, like research and assist availability of implementing in-house co-responder program with ACCPD clinicians. Is that different from what we have with Advantage already, or is that a continuation of?
Well, this initiative's specifically to looking at the continued viability of the program.
Okay, so the ACCPD clinicians would be different from the ABH, Advantage Behavioral Health clinicians, or was it just a, like, not needs clarifying? So it could be either. I mean, it's not, we aren't hiring the social, the clinicians. We're using the, working with the Advantage Behavioral Health, right?
Right.
So I don't know if that's a new thing here, or that was just the wrong initials there, or it should be both. So that's just.
Effectively, we've been working as a partnership for seven years now. And if this was a route that we pursued, kind of functionally speaking, you know, I think the aims would be the same, you know, to have a mokatu, professional competencies on the street, you've got some police competency, you've got some counseling competency, but just given how challenging the work world is for clinicians generally, the thought has been, should we look to see whether we employed those folks directly? We would have more consistent folks in the field pairing with our.
Okay, so that is specifically ACCPD clinicians. And so, and then the next one, too, just as an example, I'm not going through, but like allow returning students to develop skills. So it's like, we are doing some of that already. This is just a continuation. So some of this stuff is work that we are doing on a regular basis and it continues. So it's not all new there. And then there was just one other thing, and I just want to, initiative 3A3, what is that? And I just want to, anytime I have an opportunity to say this one, what did I just say? 3A1. Anyway, it has to do with established formal relationships for recruitment and applicants, interns, and work-based learning from UGA, blah, blah, blah. And it includes Athens Tech in here, but I just want to reiterate that, especially we may have some police officers here, I see some firefighters. You know, they have a, one of their more robust programs is the Athens Tech Criminal Justice Program. And I wish we could take advantage of that program a little bit more. And it might require more persistent efforts on our part, reaching out, you know? So, and pushing that a little bit, because there really are a lot of, those are, those are a lot of students who grew up here in Athens or close by, and would be more likely to want to work with Athens Clark County. So anything we can do to push that for? And that's all.
Again, and I agree with Commissioner Myers, but again, I understand there may be some things that we will have to cut back, no matter how good we feel about it.
I think that's fair to say. And of course, many of these things aren't one and done. They're kind of multi-year things that we prioritize because we really realize that we always have some ground to gain. And so some of it is just even speed of delivery. Saying, hey, we've got a priority, we want to build this thing. Hey, maybe this is an eight-year bill rather than.
I know that we're gonna hear from the public when we start having to make some hard decisions. So just because something existed and we thought was good, it may not make, it may make the chopping block. And I just want us to be prepared for that. That's my own.
Anything else on these plans? All right, the next item we had, just for questions only, was the College Square schematic design. We, of course, approved the concept plan. So we've really seen this in effect, but this just dives a layer deeper and looks at some of the component pieces that we're ready to get to building. And of course, you see the budget embedded here as well. So any questions about this from commissioners?
Looks good to me.
Karen?
Okay, I'm just, sorry, an easy question. It's a question on the seating. When I was looking at the, I just wanted to make sure I understood where the seating was, so I tried to find that. You know, that's.
Diagram?
Yeah. And is it like the, maybe it was that one where it had all those little things.
That's the shade. There's a specific one.
Right, for seating.
There you go.
So, and I think looking in there, was that, like, the middle three have tables? And the ones, I mean, of these, what are there, one, two, three, four, five? The middle three have tables at them, and the ones on the outside have benches? I couldn't quite figure that out.
There's a variety of seating options that we're exploring. So benches, different table types, with and without umbrellas, fixed and unfixed, mostly onto the edges. So that's where the shade would be. That's where the activity would be.
And are these, this is a schematic, this is set of idea design? I mean, the actual sitting might change between now and when we're doing this. Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, there might be another bench somewhere or something or other.
Yeah, correct. This isn't going out to bed yet. There's, they're in this phase of things, probably the first 50% of the design phase. There's still 50% of the design phase to.
Fine, that's it.
Melissa?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm still concerned about the expansive brick. I'd like to see some more smooth pavement, at least in some, like, more simple area. I feel like it would increase the diversity of activities that you go, go on there. Brick does have a tendency to heave a little bit. I know it depends on the quality of it. But, you know, it's not an ideal surface for, for wheel activities or like ballroom dancing and any, I mean, this is gonna be a public space kind of central to downtown. I can imagine all kinds of performance and art activities going on. And I want to make sure that it has that capability, that service capability for, you know, rollerblading, breakdancing, unicycles, and someone who rides a scooter, which is, you know, it's really sensitive to, like, changes in pavement. I can tell you that riding on a brick surface is not ideal.
No, we've heard, we've heard your concerns. We've definitely done our research. We've looked at a lot of precedents for different spaces similar to this, and almost all of them, like, exclusively have pavers, whether it's, you know, the Charlottesville Mall, whether it's Church Street in Vermont, Pearl Street and Boulder. And I think they have some of these functions you're talking about on these pavers. We bend to spaces where they are all pavers and they don't have some of the issues that you're talking about. So we've, we've met with all the departments to discuss our plans. We've talked about maintenance and some of their concerns. Where, what is the issue at times where pavers are popping up? And what are, what's causing that? And I think we've narrowed down, you know, some of the main causes of that. One is tree roots. We are proposing trees here, but they're proposed in a system that is, that is unique, that's not done in downtown Athens, right? The tree wells, yes.
There are often two commonalities, one being the tree roots, and then two just being for installation. And how those papers are set, what they're set on, how they're compacted, and how the edges are restrained. So going back to the smooth surface, the brick papers that we would be providing here, this would be a smooth surface. They would be locked in place. There would be no beveled edges. So this would maintain a smooth finish. We're not talking about cobble. We're not talking about kind of rounded edges. So you minimize that, well, you would eliminate any kind of bumpiness.
I'm also concerned about the dark color, you know, being susceptible to. Hey, it heats up quick here. And, you know, I know that a lighter color is less likely to attract that heat, especially when we have a space that is not gonna be shaded for many years before those trees really, really grow. I mean, I know you have the shade cells, which is great. But, you know, I'm just, I'd love to see, you know, maybe that B area be more more of a, kind of a centralized space with a smoother surface, a lighter surface that for a performative role.
I like what you guys have done. So just offer a different opinion. I think what you, the work you put forward is good. And I think that's gonna look good for downtown, and people in Athens will enjoy.
If you do look at it and parents into what's out there, the asphalt pavers are gonna drastically reduce the heat island by considerable degrees. I mean, we're talking about five to 10 degrees. Now, we are trying to offset that with the addition of shade cells that will serve it as kind of that will be in place before the trees have a chance to kind of grow up. Now, we're looking at larger variety of trees, bigger caliber kind of going in. First off, to your point about lighter colored painting materials, 30% of the plaza is lighter pickers. We're trying to account for that. But in comparison to concrete, I mean, brick pavers, it's a trade-off. They're, they're kind of in kind in terms of how much heat they absorb. And pavers also have the added effect of they cool down much quicker than concrete pavers, much quicker than asphalt.
Allison, a little.
Well, it's definitely an improvement from the asphalt that we're going to replace. And I like the variety that you're getting with the grid work of it. And I think the Georgia red clay pavers, we've already committed to that as an accept color already in downtown. So this is moving forward with that. And I missed an initial comment, but a lot of communities in these areas, it's something that we need to address. It's called dismount zones. It's not good for pedestrian safety to have, especially motorized, wield apparatuses. So it could be something else we need to look into. So I don't think we need to define it for wield.
We've considered that as well, just information. Get a notification that this is a pedestrian-oriented space, not to say that, you know, bikes and other modes of transportation can't use this space. We want to encourage that. We want that to be as inclusive as possible, but yeah.
But like in Fort Collins, there's a path for that. And then there's a area that's dismount zone. So it can be whimsically also communicated without deterring the beauty of, improved beauty of this area, but we do want it to be safe for both. Good job. I like it.
I like it too. I was trying to get my computer working, so you might thought I wasn't listening. Attention. But I do like it, and I do like the fact that you checked all different resources and opportunities to come up with this. It's not like one person, this is what we want to do, and this is what we want to do. I like the fact that you did go around and, you know, check in with folk before you brought this project to us. I think the project is for the public at large, and I like it. I like the light colors and everything, but I did want to put that out there, that you, that you did your homework. You were very deliberate. Thank you.
Follow, Allison?
Um, yes, I didn't read the whole presentation. I pretty much picture person, so I went that way. But I had given some names to be the SPOSS user groups, and they had said that they have not been contacted, so I wanted to make sure they get looped in. Because I, you know how each SPOSS project has a, has a group? I have two residents from the district.
Yeah, the manager names those user groups.
Oh, so asked to name two.
Well, they may have asked for suggestions, but as a formality, the manager names the user groups. But we can check with the acting manager and find out where that is.
Yeah, okay, because I want to communicate to them to quit looking for the emails. And I thought that that would be looped in, and I thought maybe, because this project's a little bit different. It's kind of a hybrid.
We will continue to update the website, so we need to make sure that that information gets pulled out to.
Well, Sarah, I have got my business owner on the square, and then a retired professor who from the art department, who knows a lot about some of the Italian laws and stuff. So just let me know if there are going to be contacts need to be ready.
So Mayor, are you saying that all of the SPOSS user group comes from the manager?
Yeah, the manager formally names them by our SPOSS process. And the manager often will reach out and say, do you know anybody that's X, Y, and Z certified? Because we need somebody else.
So that might have been the stage I was at, thinking that it would also land as the answer. It was just an informed decision, potentially on my part.
Anything else on the College Square?
Can we look at slide 17 and 18 and just review that again, so the funding?
Yeah.
I understand this, the conventional. So is this mean it's one conventional bank loan, two, this money, three, that has my solicitation services to explore stated? Right now, are we going ahead with the, have we already, have we already agreed to the million-dollar bank loan?
The intent is to get a conventional loan, and of course, backed by future parking revenues. You'll see in the that the complete payment of the Washington Street deck here in a few months. And so we could roll those expenditures into this.
Yeah, it says they're gonna allocate 40% of downtown parking to this. But will this, I guess what I'm saying is, does this, just in terms of process, not evaluation, does this loan then come back in front of us here, or is this?
It's an IDDA.
That's what I, right. So what is the next decision point for us?
So we'll go out and bid in a war in November.
Oh, it says that on the 19th, yeah.
There's something on our, and there's something on our agenda.
Page 19, page 19.
Get approval of this.
Okay, thank you. All my answers.
Any other questions? All right, I appreciate it. Thanks, y'all, for your work. I'm really looking forward to this. You can be great, but I can spend time alone. All right, y'all, we'll go ahead and we'll move to our special call session. And so I'll go ahead and ask the clerk to roll for us.
Devonport? Here, sorry. Taylor, here. Ryan, present. Fisher, Johnson. Paul Pepper. Myers, here. Thornton, here. Hamby, we have a call.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're here today to consider PeacePlus 2018, Project 13. We, of course, had a little bit of right-of-way acquisition in eminent domain on two parcels. And I know some folks were interested in a slightly deep dive into kind of what specific pieces of property would be centered here. And so the manager, I know, engaged with several commissioners and provided just more specific graphics than we'd had before, of course, to now have a chance to go out and visit the site if they'd like. So I want to go ahead and open it up to public input. Should anybody be here from the public? Is any member of the public here to speak to this item? All right, I'll move to a motion from a member of the body.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Got a motion, Link, second. Commissioner, Commissioner Link, any remarks?
Um, yeah, I'm just really glad to see this moving forward. I took time to swing by the site. I'm really, really, really familiar with the area. I've crossed it, I've put in bike and car for decades. And I'm eager to see it move forward, and there's, there's plenty of on-street parking there. And it looks like our design will accommodate even more with some pull-in spaces. So the businesses should be accommodated pretty well.
Mr. Fisher, if I may.
I went by also, and, yeah. Again, if I sneeze, I was concerned about him putting some of that space, but then realized space they were using really wasn't his space. And then we are gonna accommodate and make sure that they have a little parking.
Anything else? Commissioner Thornton?
Yes, obvious, no, I did not go by. And I have confidence in my colleagues, but I do hope when we get anything that has eminent domain written in it, small print, big print, that is spelled out. Because I do think, just because this situation kind of worked out, eminent domain is a really serious issue, and we should be prepared for it. But yes, I'm good with this now.
And I think the manager's remark to me that just as explanatory documents go, the engineered drawings that you had in your initial packet probably don't provide optimal clarity. Sometimes it's nice when you go like, here's the little red slice that we're taking, just so you know. Anything else?
And we also have funding. It's not, it's bought property as well, slivers or however.
That's right. Property is compensated.
It budgets for the, well, actually, is it?
The honor that you say is the Constitution.
Yes, exactly.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Better than the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Right, got a motion from Commissioner Taylor, second from Commissioner Thornton to adjourn special call session. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. And we're gonna move back to our work sessions. And we will have Nikki Seller, Human Resources Director, who is gonna talk to us about our compensation strategy and then the benefits and well-being strategy as well. Vicky, thank you for joining us. Good to have you here.
Yes, thank you for having me. The pleasure to be able to present to you today our compensation and benefits information. Some of the things we will be talking about today, just hiring and retention, obviously compensation benefits, information on retirement plans. We want to maintain our employer of choice status in Athens Clark County. We still are in a challenging higher roof climate, however. January, we got some statistics that show unemployment's at 3.2% in Athens, which is very low. It's essentially full employment, so it's, we're all vying for the same talent. We are able to hire people very well. We're constantly staying busy with that task. It is a bit of a challenge still to retain. And this slide shows vacancies by department. The bar graph, at the top of the graph, or at the bar, there's a number which indicates the number of vacant positions in that department. Below is the department, and beside the department is a number which shows the total authorized number of positions. And we have 100% full-time staffed for 15 departments. And we have filled about 87.4% of our.
The manager's office, looking lower.
It's the highest percentage of us, for sure, and it's been higher now that we've got the additional physicians.
Yeah, you said there was, how many departments that are full-time?
That are fully staffed.
Fully set team. And, and just for me, I'm sure everybody else knows this, how many departments do we have?
Forty-two. Is that right, 42? Yeah.
Quick, quick question on this.
Sure.
On the, down on the bottom right where it says, you know, full-time hired, 184, full-time terminated, 156. So those are the people who are no longer employed in this past year that this covers. Do we know how many of that 156 are through retirement versus?
I can get that number for you. I think we had from maybe November. I think we had from maybe November through January, February, there were thirty-plus retirements. There were, there were quite a few, yeah.
Only, also let's follow with Commissioner Myers, almost terminated. Can we do or figure out possibly how long they had been with us? Or were these for like short-term, or these, I know you mentioned we have an issue with retention. So were these employees that had been with them maybe five, ten years, not go somewhere else? Do y'all, that, y'all look at today and.
Yeah, we, we can certainly break that down for you. Usually, we're losing them within the first three years. The majority of that, but I don't have the specific data for, for this group, but I can get that to you, Commissioner. So our rolling twelve-month turnover is about fifteen point five percent. We'd like to get that down.
What has it been, I mean, just out of curiosity, that, I mean, to me, on the face of it, doesn't seem that high considering the number of employees, but maybe it is, I don't know. And I'm just wondering what it, what it's been like, five years ago, what was, what was the turnover?
Well, interestingly enough, I have a slide for you here. And, and this doesn't say what it was exactly fifteen years ago or five years ago. We can certainly get that data to you, Commissioner.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, or is there some industry norm, like what the goal would be? Would it be good to have it at twelve percent, you know, just like you were saying?
Yes, optimally around ten percent would be a really good rate, and that's our goal. So we're going to work towards that goal.
Okay.
And we need to identify exactly why our employees are leaving. So we're going to create a robust exit interview process.
We can imagine is a good point. So when we look at people who are leaving, I guess we need to look at where they are, or they all go, lower end, middle end, or the high end. Look at that, where I'm going is.
On salary wise?
Salary wise, what, what are we starting at? What's our starting salary for any employee? For that, it comes to work for S. Clark County Government. And then how does that look? How do we compete locally with that?
Right, and part of the pay studies that we're currently conducting is going to shed some light on that information so that we have good comparisons, good, you know, against real peer groups, so we can see where, where we're, where we fall.
And just in real dollar terms, kind of the floor is about thirty-three grand a year.
Yeah, it's fifteen dollars and maybe cents an hour, I believe, is in the sixteen, fifteen, sixty, thank you, Sarah. Yeah, so that translates to about that, a little higher maybe.
So I, you know, and I guess I'm probably just really nervous about this budget season, probably, huh? So despite the vacancies that we have, I guess I have to wait till the budget season, maybe gone through the process. It's no way you can answer my question.
And we can come back as often as you like, Commissioner, to, you know.
And you know where she works.
But thank to actually starting, they will help us though. As we look at the budget process, you know, we got the vacancies, or we know how many those. Yeah, for me, I kind of like the way, how long had it been vacant?
Yeah, that kind of thing.
And it is a situation where if it's been three years since we finished this position, is it something else that we need to do or take a look at?
Sure, sure. And I don't think there are any vacancies that have been truly vacant that long. I think it's just turnover with some of our physicians. Some, some public safety, some grounds workers, some of those kinds of things.
And, and I guess this will come back again to the budget season. Are some of these positions that we have to pay for, like, you know, full benefits? Are some of these positions, could they be in some type of consultant role or positions and that we would not have to carry the full benefits and stuff like that? Is that something that we could consider during budget season? I don't know. I have no idea.
And that's certainly a policy consideration, just generally. You know, you have different kind of public sector organizations, whether local governments or school districts, that outsourced along going, for example.
Right, that's what I'm.
So there's certain things we could talk about.
Yeah, they do. Houseman does the school district bowling houses, yeah.
This slide is also interesting because it, it provides some, some things that were happening locally for the unified government as well as nationally like COVID. So you can see where there are rises and falls in the data here. This is a snapshot last year. The approved compensation plan for the unified table costs one point two nine six nine. Included four percent market across the board, three percent pay table increase, four percent pay table increase, and step increases for public safety. This year, we are proposing a compensation plan that is very similar with three percent pay table increase for the unified pay plan, four percent market increase for a total of one point three million. And public safety pay plan, we are recommending a three percent pay table increase and step increases for a total of three point six million.
Question, and it's similar to what some of my colleagues. Three to twenty twenty-two, have we been giving our employees three and four percent annually? And that usual?
There were a couple of years fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three when they were higher than that.
Before that, was it lower?
It escalated a lot. I mean, certainly in the trough and fiscal eleven, twelve, thirteen, there were some no raise years. And I think that is probably how we got into some of that challenge, just in terms. Structure, sorry.
Oh, no, no.
Is that for government officials, or for, is three and four typical for like Augusta, Savannah cities?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's, it's fairly typical. There are some that are a little higher. There are some that are still not giving any increases. You know, it just, it depends on their local situation.
Thank you.
Sure, and we can certainly check with Augusta if you'd like us to.
I do know CEO from the camp, probably this year, but I'm going to hire free. She did an executive order. I'm doing that right now. I did see that coming from you.
Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Stephen McKenzie. He's our benefits consultant at our partner, Ethic.
Thank you, Vicki. So we're going to go through a little bit of the current benefits, overall health insurance review projections that we're seeing in terms of the cost for calendar year and fiscal year. So I'm going to talk about that in the next few slides. This year, if you remember from last year's presentation, we talked about how we met with the HR team and the managers to try to develop more concrete strategy on how we were going to manage the plans over the long term. So we came up with the, the idea of a mission. At the base of this mission are guiding principles that in general don't change unless they absolutely have to. And then we have annual strategies that hold up the whole house. And so the employer of choice, Vicki mentioned that earlier, that's, that's the mission that we're still striving to. At the base of this is the guiding principles, which is addressing the whole person, so not just the health of the individual, the, the mental health, well-being, the financial well-being, the entire person, and then financial stability. So we want to be good stewards of the planned dollars that, that we have to spend. We saw the importance of the, we saw the importance of the employee survey results. And so that's going to be a big tent of how we make decisions going forward. And then ultimately recruiting and retention, you saw on Vicki's previous slides there, using benefits as a way to attract and retain employees. So the next few slides here have a good bit of numbers on them. I'll give you the highlights here. You'll see a similar setup as we go through these. This here is the pre-sixty-five retirees, and this is on a calendar year basis. Plan year is on a calendar year, so we've put things both on a calendar year and a fiscal year. These three columns, what they represent is the calendar year two thousand twenty-four, the actual spend for that. The middle column is essentially a recast or a re-protection of what we think the calendar year twenty-five would be with more recent information that is now available since we actually made the projection. And then finally, the one that's of most importance is the far right, which is the calendar year twenty-six projection. So if we look at the calendar year projection for the pre-sixty-five retirees, we're estimating about a nine point eight percent increase. And that is roughly about a five million dollar, five point one million dollar in total plan cost. So we did see some favorable experience across the board, and really in the last twelve to eighteen months. That experience, I wouldn't say it's deteriorated, but it's gotten a little bit, little bit worse since, since, you know, a year ago, for instance. So that's why we're seeing some increases in two thousand twenty-six. And this looks at same population, but just on a fiscal year basis. So if we go to that far right column, your fiscal year twenty-six projection is estimated to be about seven point five percent higher than it currently is, and that is about a four point eight million dollar in medical plan cost spend for the, for the government. And just wrapping it up, so key takeaways for the pre-sixty-five retirees. I did mention that surplus that we experienced in two thousand twenty-four. It ran at a sixty-six percent loss ratio. In other words, that total expenses, medical pharmacy claims, what you pay Anthem to administer your plan was sixty-six percent of the total budget that was set. So that's a good thing, two point two million dollars helps keep the increase down for future years, essentially. We had a, a lower claims cost on a per employee per month. It was actually down almost twenty, twenty percent from two thousand twenty-three. What drove that were two main things in the pre-sixty-five retiree group. We did have RX pharmacy pricing improvement. So you may remember we went to market a couple of years ago to get a better contract. That contract negotiated with Anthem and to some better rebates, better discounts that you, that you have to procure your prescription drugs. And so that helps out, helps lower the plan spent in total. And then members with lasers, which is just a, a way of saying that there's high-cost individuals on the plan that have a higher deductible, stop-loss deductible than others. And so those high-cost individuals have exited the plan, which led to a decrease in the total cost. So moving into the actives, this is the bulk of your budget. This has about twelve hundred folks in it compared to about two hundred and eighty on the retiree side, the pre-sixty-five retiree side, same sort of setup here. There's a few things that you'll see added in the bottom half of this chart. Those are things like HSA annual deposits, incentives for your wellness program and things like that that we have to account for in this budget that we don't have to in the pre-sixty-five retirees. So we are seeing for calendar year two thousand twenty-six, about a seven percent increase in the total cost, which is a total plan spend of about twenty-one point six million dollars. Of course, your employees do contribute to the plan to participate in it. So after you take account of that, the estimated net cost to ACC Gov is about sixteen. And this is looking at fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, same, same sort of three columns we had in previous slide. The fiscal year two thousand twenty-six projection is coming in at a six point two percent increase. And after you account for the employee contributions, we're down to about a fifteen point one, almost fifteen point two million dollar net ACC government cost. All in all, especially on the active side of things, I would say that, that, that projection, given there's no plan design changes in that projection or anything, is, is pretty favorable at this point. That projection looks a decent amount into the future, and also we have headwinds in the healthcare environment today of the general inflation we're seeing. Market norms are estimated to be anywhere from seven to nine percent healthcare trend this next year. So where you're at right now is a pretty favorable projection. We have some of the same items that helped us on the active side as of the pre-sixty, pre-sixty-five retirees. Large claim at frequency being down, those lasers that have exited the plan, as well as the RX pharmacy pricing improvements. And you did also have a surplus in two thousand twenty-four, similar to the pre-sixty-five retirees. So this here goes back to a little bit what we talked about in the guiding principles. The, some of the survey results that we had heard in years past, as we piece them together, begin to, begin to look essentially like the employees that, for instance, were, were leaving Athens or those that had turned down this job for another one, was really, if it was benefits related, it was really related to the cost to participate in the plan, not necessarily the plan design. Do you offer three pretty good plan designs? I would say they're market norm, or for instance, you offer a plan that has a higher deductible, but a lower cost to participate, very common approach to benefits in, in your industry. Where we were hearing noise was how much people were paying and to participate in the plan at their paycheck. So one of the strategies that we began to employ was to freeze the contributions, to hold the contributions at their current level. So we anticipate continuing to be able to do that. And what this slide demonstrates is what it takes to get to our target ACC Gov cost share, which was seventy-five percent. If you look at two thousand twenty-three, the actual cost share for that year was sixty-eight percent. We held contributions, the employee cost for two thousand twenty-four, but the, but the actual percentage stayed the same essentially because the overall costs were low. So that's, that's a good news, a good result there, even though that percentage didn't make it any closer to seventy-five. If we work this out over the next three years and continue to hold the contributions, we think sometime around the twenty, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven plan year, we will, we will get to that seventy-five percent cost share. Of course, that does mean added cost to the government itself, but it addresses that, that problem or that noise that we were hearing of employees participating in the plan and how much it costs.
On, on that one, I'm just making sure I got this right. I'm comparing this to like, back to the proposed compensation plan. And it looks to me, if I'm reading these numbers right, that the plan, like the, the increase to keep that medical cost to employees stable is kind of comparable to what we're increasing in the, the pay. Or am I reading, like, if I go back to page six, and then I compare it to the one we were looking at, as we were, we were, I'm just thinking about that increase, the amount of money that we're paying for the health insurance as a percentage of it, like an increase over the years. And so from twenty, you know, it's one point three million dollars more in twenty twenty-six. It looks like that for the medical that we're paying, right? And then if we're, are we, what, how much more are we paying for the salaries themselves? Back on six. Is that, should I just be looking at the cost?
What page are you on?
Well, and, and so just in principle, of course, you know, what we're doing is continuing to pursue that notion that your raise is really a raise, that your raise isn't going to get eaten up in any reason.
Right, right, no, but I'm trying to think about this in terms of excluding also public and taxpayer payers that we're probably, probably it's a little bit less if I look at the public safety. But I mean, we're, it's very, it's, it's not that, it's a big, big number, right? I mean, we're paying, it's those numbers, two hundred and thirteen, one point three million, one point two million and seven hundred and forty thousand that are the increase. And so that would be the increase to give these pay, to give employees raises. And then we're also paying for the other amount, the one point three. So if I added those all together, that would be the increase to our budget of what we're paying for salary and benefits this year. Is that right? Is, am I thinking about it right? Okay, thank you.
And of course, as, as Brad mentioned in the Big Rocks meeting, this really takes up, you know, the biggest chunk of what our increased cost over the entire general fund would be. Is, is just this natural escalation of salary and benefit costs.
Yeah, you know, one thing that I appreciate, we got a surplus. And it's great, I'm seven shoe, but I've always advocated for competition. Talk about, I'm holding line, my employees paying more, but was that there to see what's competition? We get a better deal, you know, keep the same type of benefits. So again, last couple of times I talked about it, it sort of got shot down, but I think really stay competitive in what we do. I think we really should take a look, see what other providers make and provide for us, or get some type of consortium of county and local governments, see and be competitive. The more people you got involved, the price tend to be better. I remember when I worked at UGA, for a long time, and the system took over and put all the schools on the plan and gave about pricing. So again, something could sell down the road and I think it's something we may want to look at.
And I don't know if either of you want to talk about just systemically what it looks like to kind of go out to bid for a new healthcare provider for a organization our size.
Yeah, so we, we certainly look at it. So I totally understand where you're coming from and we have gone to bid for this a few times. For instance, the pharmacy was the most recent and tackled dental was a few years before that. So we continue to evaluate that. We do make sure that we're trying to execute that at the right point in time. So everything from, you know, meeting the timeline of meetings like this to the, the network contracts that are going on between competitors of Anthem and local hospitals and things of that nature too. So it's certainly evaluated. We did also do a little bit of digging around sodium approach. And some of the advisors that helped run that essentially mentioned that you were in a very good spot where you are today. So here you live, they're definitely something we'll look at. You're probably up to look at the provider for your health insurance in the next year or two to evaluate that. Since we just tackled the pharmacy, that is also with, with the same provider Anthem, so it would affect that arrangement as well.
Yeah, I do think we are, as I mentioned to you on January thirtieth in our meeting, we have created a self imposed monopoly and our rates are going up and we, we don't know if we have any wiggle room or not because we, we're not engaging with individuals or companies in regard to other plans, other plan types, and if there was a benefit. And I, and I heard you loud and clear, like it's most likely not. But if our competition, if what we have knows we're not looking, why would they, you know, offer us any type of, you know, benefit or increase or decrease? But I, I do support what Commissioner Fisher stated.
So rounding out the picture of some items to consider, we talked about holding employee contributions. The other item that we wanted to look at was enhancing health savings account, HSA funding. You all contribute today, two hundred and fifty dollars for an individual if they elect the, one of the HSA plans and five hundred dollars for a family. We see a median employer in that government sector contribute a thousand dollars for a single and two thousand dollars for a family. Across the board, I would say the benchmark for all employers is around five hundred dollars individual, one thousand family. So what we did here is just a relatively quick, easy analysis on what it would look like from a cost standpoint, an annual cost standpoint, to change that funding arrangement to increase it. So you have six hundred and seventy seven employees in the HSA plans today that are, you're funding about two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars for in a year. If you increase that to five hundred or a thousand dollars, you get to four hundred and sixty three thousand. We also built a scenario in for each of the different alternatives, looking at increase of enrollment. Because when you make this increase to the HSA contributions, you may actually get more people to enroll in, enroll in those plans. So we added a ten percent buffer to that scenario, as well as the scenario of increasing to the median amount of a thousand for an individual and two thousand for a family. So that scenario is a nine hundred and twenty seven thousand dollar annual cost, nearly seven hundred thousand dollars more than you spend today. And then we have the scenario of increasing it by ten percent. And then, you know, why would you do this other than just an attraction and retention standpoint and trying to get with benchmark? Is these plans generally cost less for the, for the government than do your traditional POS or copay type plan? There's more consumerism involved in them. The employees that participate in them are, are more likely to keep an eye on their own health because they have their own dollars as well as the dollars you've given them at play. So just something for consideration here in order to get, you know, to benchmark essentially what we see out in the marketplace.
Yeah, within the employee survey, did, did this come out as one of the examples of, hey, I might, because this is only for people, for employees that have our insurance, right?
Correct.
So did that come through the survey as a potential increase, you know, reason that somebody would?
I'm, I'd have to go back and see if there was comments on the HSA fund.
Just let us know, I mean, I'm not trying to confuse you, but I'm curious about, because I like the way you're bringing this forward as an idea, but I was also curious. And so like how many, what's the percentage also of our employees that use our insurance that even qualify for this? So if, anyway.
Yes, now that, we can check on, on the survey question and see if there was any comments related specifically to that. I can tell you at two hundred and fifty dollars and five hundred, there are some employers that don't fund an HSA at all. So you are more generous than some. It's just the benchmark we see is at least five hundred thousand or a thousand, two thousand for the, for the government sector. It obviously be welcome news for at least six hundred and seventy seven folks and their, and their families.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Yeah, yeah, six hundred and seventy seven in there. And of course, that's, that's a little more than half, maybe you're about half of your total population, act of population.
You're good with plans, I appreciate it.
All right, looking ahead. One thing we would like to offer our employees this, this coming year is a dental enhancement option. It's a buy up option for where they are currently. The annual maximum is a little higher and it also covers orthodontia for adults and children, not just children. And it, it just provides a little, a little more coverage and it's, it's an employee paid benefit. ACC Gov doesn't contribute anything and that's, that's wrong.
Yes, it's your provider, yeah. We see a dual option PPO or a dual option dental offering fairly common in the marketplace. Generally differences are the annual maximums. And then people either, you know, don't want orthodontia because they don't need it, or they want it for themselves and their kid. So we thought providing that option, then it would be at no cost to the government because it's an employee paid, it's something that you all may want to consider.
How, how much is the cost to the employee, the difference between the current and the buy up?
So, yeah, we, we'd have to get the exact quote on it. You know, the, the base plan would be very, probably a little bit less than what you have today. The buy up would, it would, you know, look like a pretty substantial increase, but you're getting a lot more coverage in terms of the annual maximum. And then of course, of course, adult ortho being part of that plan as well.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I knew that when I had dental insurance with the state, it was like barely like, you know, it's like, okay, that's going to save me a hundred and fifty dollars if I use it all. Is ours similar to that? You know, anyone know, that's all right, we'll find out later.
The orthodontics, it costs a lot.
Yeah.
I think two hundred bucks on a five grand bill.
Yeah, I know.
So another thing for consideration that we're looking at, and you may have heard some noise around this too as well. This is not just an ACC Gov issue, it's, it's an employer wide issue. It's the fact that a lot of medical transport services, the EMS, ambulances and helicopters of the world are not in network for a lot of carriers. So we have some statistics here. You had a hundred and thirty one members that had at least one ambulance claim. Seventy two percent of those, of the providers are out of network and eighty percent of the claims are out of network. So what does this mean for your folks is that they get balance billed for, for the difference. We have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional member liability as a result of balance billing in two thousand twenty four, which is an average charge of about three thousand dollars for your folks. So there's a solution out there in the marketplace. We've come across a couple of times and we evaluated it. We have some cost information on the next slide, but what it basically does is that it covers the financial exposure related to that. It's a voluntary benefit, so they'd have to pay for it, but it would help cover the air ambulance, the ground ambulance and, and any of the issues related to being balanced billed for a network claim.
Stephanie, you have a question?
I apologize, I was writing as you were talking and you stated, I think, one hundred and fifty thousand dollar benefit. Is that based on ICD nine code or is it based on a certain amount of dollars spent for, for that year of, year to date?
So good question. So that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional member liability in two thousand twenty four. And it's a report from Anthem where they'll essentially look at the folks that were balance billed or went out of network for a ambulance claim and how much was that total liability they had to come out of pocket for. Across all of the hundred and thirty one, hundred and thirty one claims, there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional member liability.
Per member or?
No.
Okay, back to the organization.
Yeah, can I ask a question that maybe?
Yeah, Mike.
So why is the ambulance service we have here in town considered out of network? Is that, who's, who, who do we need to talk to about that?
They're coming up next.
Yeah, I was about to say, so a little out of our purview, but I do know there's a, they're coming up next to talk about that. There's a contract negotiation ongoing, you know, it wouldn't solve all hundred and thirty one, but it would certainly.
Yeah, I'm going to guess in network. We'll talk about it.
Yeah, and so keep, keep this in mind, please.
Yes.
I, I do want you to explicitly connect what we're talking about here with what we're going to be talking about in about fifteen minutes.
Yep.
Carol.
And in terms of this insurance, and I'm asking later, but because you cover insurance plans, do you know if other states have any state regulations that require insurance EMS to be in network if it's the only provider? So I can imagine that.
Yeah.
Something is.
With a different regulatory framework.
Right, 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 on a state level, because we can get our state reps to work on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that answer, but I can see if I can figure that out.
It's a national issue though.
Yeah.
It's a Georgia issue.
Yep.
Yeah, this is amazing.
Mr. I do have answers for that one. It's our.
And we'll answer that again.
So if it's something of consideration, I know there's other conversations that will go on that may impact decisions here, but this was just some costs that we were able to source. Massa is the provider, they're really the only provider that does this sort of benefit. Basically, you could have an employee paid option or a employer paid option or a combination thereof. And there's a handful of different levels of this benefit. So it would do everything from, you know, cover the, the air and ground transportation to if you got injured away from home, it covers the air and ground away from home, but it also gets you back to home. And then the next one up is that plus organ transportation, plus if you're there with your pet and your pet needed to get back. So there's a number of different levels you can choose from here. Again, you can employee paid, employer paid or some combination thereof. But this is something, it's been an issue for ACGA for a number of years and we just wanted to, you know, put a possible solution out there. I know, I know your folks are getting some, some calls on it.
And, and on this one, and this might be a question for our follow up, I, I'm not quite sure, but you know, if you look up there, a hundred and thirty one ACC Gov medical plan members incurred at least one ambulance claim, right? And, but the liability was a hundred and fifty thousand at three thousand, which makes it sound like a good portion of those might have been covered if they lived in another county. And I don't know if that would impact how, do we know if, if people who are living in other counties with other ambulance services getting in network and therefore for our accounting here, it would, it would serve fewer people because we have so many people who live out of, you know, who work for us but live out of county.
Do we have like a, either a list or graphic we can provide that would indicate, okay, if you live in Egglethorpe County, if you live in Albert County?
Yeah, I think we can back into something like that. Well, that'll be a report we'll have to get from Anthem, but that, it's certainly.
Because that would affect how many people would, you take advantage of it and how much it might cost, right? So.
I will say that to add to this discussion, it's not just our employees that are having this.
Oh, yeah.
It's other employers.
Yeah, this is not an ACGA.
And our, our neighboring counties, our partners having the same challenge.
Yep. The adjacent ones are likely the same service.
Well, they don't, they have, Madison County has its own ambulance service, so it might be a different situation.
Nationals, Clark and Akoni. Organism.
I'm just wondering how, that's, that's what I wanted, that data would help, but.
We'll follow up with that.
Our defined benefit pension plan this year is projected, projected to cost fourteen point three million. The pension board has proposed for this body for future consideration or no consideration, changing the pension eligibility rules to a rule of eighty five, which would be age plus years of service. And you can see what that looks like and the information.
Can you hang on just a second, Vicky? So I can add some commentary to this. So as part of the pension board, we've been, we have been trying to figure out ways to, to enhance our pension fund so that it also enhances keeping employees and, and rewarding those that have stayed here for, for a long time. So, so that what you see up there is something we've been discussing. It is, it is something that's awesome money. So, so as, as a pension board member, I'm, you know, trying to advocate for what the pension board wants and, but also recognize as a commissioner that, and are maybe, maybe a little bit tight this year. So, so these are the ongoing discussions and we'll probably have more of this information for you as, as buddy comes around and we see what, what the final one looks like.
Yeah, and I agree with Mike and it's good just to have this in front of you, almost like you have the kind of capital needs in front of you, just to kind of think holistically, like, all right, what are all the things?
Maybe everyone else understands this, but I don't understand this rule of eighty five.
So for example, if you serve thirty years, if you were fifty five years old, you would meet the rule of eighty five and you could begin to collect full benefits immediately and you would have to wait until sixty or some future date.
So it's like what I, I mean, it's, is it sixty or below anytime? Is it just basically if you get your years of retirement, your thirty years and you can take retirement?
Your age plus your years of service equal eighty five.
Oh, that's where they. I didn't know where that, oh, age. I know that was actually. Easy bath problem.
It's a lost stare and you don't collect anything till you're eighty five.
Long history, the rule of eighty five, okay, got it, got it.
So what's that for different, Mike? Is it, I know it's eighty twenty, it's eighty now, it's eighty thirty. When is it now?
It's, it's that first year.
It's down below. Must be sixty two with ten years.
So would that go away though?
And get replaced by this, it'd be replaced by that.
Right, this would be better, this would be better, just because it's better for employees. Like Jeff, Jeff, how old were you when you started?
Yes, I mean, right, it would, it would be, I would be eligible to retire several years earlier than waiting till sixty two because I'll, I've been here twenty seven years.
So it's, it's, it's helpful for the longevity.
I think it's where I'm going though. If you get vested, whatever we do, what's the best it gonna be? You still want to retire at sixty two or sixty five with, with the other applies to the rule of eighty five, you'll still get something.
You still have to be vested, right?
Yeah, you should have to get ten years in under this, although that could be a separate future conversation that a lot of local governments are going through.
And we are having that conversation as well to, to lower the number of years to be invested, so.
I had, I had heard from staff, you know, some of our law, our staff members, that if we're going to improve for the new folks coming in, the retirement, how that looks, not to forget the ones that have already been here as far as like this is doing, making it sooner also for them, if we're going to make it sooner on the new.
And you know, there's things we, Mike, can do on the pension board to offset some of these costs, like some other, other plan variations. And, and certainly if our, if our fund is doing, doing well, which. So it's, it's hard to bring these conversations up at this point in time when, when you see what's going on in the markets, but you see where we're trying to get to.
Could be any combination? Could you be, let's say you have twenty years of service and sixty five years? Oh, that's, that's bad math, you are already retired.
Yeah, we've looked at, we've looked at different scenarios and this is the one the board, the board landed on.
Okay.
Thanks, Vicky.
Sure. And the next slide is about our deferred compensation plan design for fiscal year twenty six. Our cost will be seven hundred and twenty nine thousand or five hundred and ten thousand. For fiscal year twenty-six, our cost will be seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand or five hundred and ten thousand to the general fund. That's with an employee contribution of four percent and employer full match of one percent. And then the deferred comp board has also proposed plan designs for future consideration, just increasing employee contribution for an increased employer match and what those costs look like. And then finally, just wanted to quickly give you an overview of where we are with our pay studies. The sheriff's department market study, they're all underway, they're at different stages. Uh, Carl Vincent is, is conducting that for us. They have compiled the data, they will do wage survey and analysis, actually, they've done that. We expect that to be completed by June twenty twenty-five with an estimated implementation or a consideration for implementation in fiscal year twenty-six. Fire and emergency, we are, um, underway with that pay study as well. Uh, we started that in March, we expect to be done in July. And perhaps, you know, depending on the collective bargaining agreement, you know, implementation would begin at some point in twenty-seven. Unified pay plan comp and class study is well underway. I'm sure everybody got a JDQ here, a lot of people did. Job description questionnaire. We've completed that, they're doing a classification analysis, and they will start the salary market assessment. So we can, should, uh, expect to be done in December twenty twenty-five with some implementation in following year, fiscal year twenty-seven. Can you send us something, um, that tells us, or if you know right now the cost of each study? I don't. Please send it to us. And I have no information about, oh, the cost of the studies? Well, sure, sure, yes, that I can do that. Thank you. Sure. That's all I have, any questions?
Any other summative questions? All right.
Right.
Thank you, thanks a bunch, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, y'all, coming up next is, uh, TK Moss, who's gonna give us our, uh, now semi-annual update on, uh, National EMS's work.
Actually, want to just make some inter.
Thank you.
For both indoors.
Brandon.
Thank you. Okay. That's why it wasn't.
We got the right person behind us.
Chief, you want to introduce everybody who's here?
Absolutely, well, first of all, thank you all for, for the opportunity to be together with you again for this, this body, uh, for this work session. We know this is the first time that we're actually going to be able to, uh, maybe provide some clarifications to the data we've been sending you by way of email. So this is our first of the, uh, as, as Mayor Gertz mentioned, uh, semi-annual performance reviews. Today, to give the presentation, I have Battalion Chief John Compu. Uh, he's in charge of support services, he's, he handles most of the statistical data, uh, from, from the fire department point of view. We've got Vice President of Operations, John Vanzel from National EMS. And we've also got some other folks in the room that can be available to answer, but I'm pretty sure these two are subject matter experts that you want to hear from. So I will sit down and let them get going.
All right. So this is, um, our data from the MOU that was signed up, I believe, back in June, uh, for us to come and semi-annually report our response, uh, data. So, uh, the first part of the presentation is going to be mine, and then, uh, National will take over the second part. And then there's just a little bit of blurb from, uh, Dispatch and their data, um, that we can speak to, but it's just basically their call processing, uh, processing time. Uh, this data is from, uh, FY twenty-five quarter two, so October twenty-four through December twenty-four. And for ours, and I believe Nationals too, we're, we're gonna have what we're responsible for reporting, you know, numbered out. So hopefully it's easy for y'all to, to follow the MOU and then, then look at the data that we, we've provided. Uh, some of our data, you're gonna see every single month, uh, it's gonna be pretty static. We're not adding, uh, trucks to the fleet, um, unless we're replacing a vehicle. So the total number is going to be fifteen trucks running twenty-four seven, uh, three sixty-five, uh, that have, um, EMS response, uh, BLS capabilities. So we have nine engines, one hazmat unit, rescue unit, um, three trucks, aerials, and fifteen total. And then that bottom graph just kind of shows you where everything is, is located in the, in the county. So I believe the MOU actually calls for, uh, system saturation when it comes to EMS calls. Uh, I thought it more prudent, it's at least from the fireside, to include all of our calls, because if we're tied up on a, on a, a line down or a structural fire, it removes EMS response capabilities from that unit. So, uh, out of our fifteen units that are available for EMS response, in this quarter, uh, quarter, we only had eleven tied up at one time. So that would have left, um, quick math, four, um, to still be able to respond to EMS calls. And even then, that was twice, and there were only, those incidents are, are that, that occasion before one was let loose, uh, was eleven and a half minutes.
It could, could you tell me that the last column, average time committed?
So that's how long those calls are, are lasting. So if you see number eleven, it's easy, because there's only two.
Yeah.
You know, so they were, they were, we had eleven units actively on a call for, and it was for eleven minutes and thirty-three seconds on average, that those eleven units were, before one was let go from the call, the call was complete, and then we had ten. So then we got five units that were now available to run EMS.
So the eleven minutes and thirty-three seconds means that the truck, from the time the truck left, uh?
Yes, ma'am, from the time we received the call, our clock, our timer starts until we hit clear from call, or Dispatch does that for us on our.
Finish that work, that job.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Apparatus?
No, ma'am, apparatus is, uh, the trucks.
So is this one event, so eleven trucks at one?
No, ma'am, it could have been any, any, uh, you know, I can pull these if you wanted to.
No, no, no.
Yeah, spread out on any type of, uh, a call that we would respond to.
Okay, thank you.
So these are not eleven units actively performing EMS duties. They're performing any of the, um, duties that we would be dispatched to. But it just occupies them, so then they're not available to perform an EMS duty at that point while they're occupied. This is our, uh, coverage zones for each station. Thank Joseph for this one, I don't know, he's already left, he made this one for us a couple of years ago, so I appreciate that. And this is, uh, each month, uh, the number of EMS calls that we have, uh, the fire department has, has run. And you'll notice that some of these numbers are going to be different than National, because they run, their, um, dispatch priorities are going to be different than ours. They're gonna run a whole lot more EMS calls, obviously, than, than we are, because we don't get dispatched on every single one of them. So the numbers being off, uh, I might get hung up on them being different. And as you can see, um, rescue EMS calls are, um, forty-eight percent of the calls that the fire department runs.
So this is only eighty-one, I'm kind of going into my firehouse mode.
Yes, ma'am.
Only eighty-one out of those, I don't know. Um, eighty-one out of whatever the total is, and it's way more than that, were actually four fires.
Yes, ma'am, and that's level one hundred, so we are, our standard for reporting calls is, uh, in first right now. So it's a national fire, um, reporting system that they're revamping, and we'll change that here probably by end of year. Uh, and this data will be a lot more, um, drilled down, a lot more intuitive, and a, a lot easier to, to present to y'all. So I look forward to being able to do that with what they're, it provides. So a, a level one hundred fire could be anything from, uh, a mobile home, a structure, a commercial fire, a woods fire, a vehicle fire, any of those things.
And, and if I could also provide clarity, that's not necessarily our response to a potential fire, like an alarm activation that's triggered because of either a system malfunction or what, maybe someone had burned food or something while cooking, would trigger an alarm, that's not necessarily those eighty-one's. We're also, we're responding to alarm activations as well, where there is a potential for a fire.
Do, do all of those fa- false alarms get?
They're noted as, 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 as alarms.
They're noted.
Well, those are false, there's not a kid, it's not a kid in school doing it, that's like.
Usually it's a system.
System malfunction, a- and we're required with our reporting to, to report what we find when we show up. So even if it was a fire in a wastebasket, and they took it outside and doused it for wa- uh, with water, we then cannot report that as a fire.
Okay.
Because we didn't see the fire, so we can't report that. Although we know and everything indicates that that was a fire, on that, you're probably gonna see that as a level six hundred, a good intent call, because we didn't really find anything when we got there, but it had already been handled. Now, we'll document that in our report and our narratives and whatnot, but, um, without drilling down to that here, some assumptions will have to be made. And the, and that little footnote on the bottom, the sixty-four percent of the good intent calls were, and we just started this a couple of years ago, we will get a initial dispatch code on our reports. So that's what, basically what Central Dispatch gets, and they'll dispatch us as something. It's very narrow, but, um, if it's an EMS call, usually it's a medical, um, event or something is, is on there. And so we know that we're going to a medical event. If National's already there and taking care of the issue, then there's nothing there for us, or if they take care of it and turn us around, all those go down as good intent calls, because we didn't do anything, but we do know that that's what we were intended to go to. But we like to keep track of, of those things, too. So our total response time, um, on average, or average was five minutes and eight seconds. And then our ninety percentile was eight minutes and twenty-seven seconds with a goal of nine minutes. And total response time is our turnout time, so the time we get the call at the station, to the time we're en route, plus our, um, travel time, which is the time in route to the time we arrive on scene.
Did, this, I was matching all this up, Christina, it's my thing here with this, uh, this morning, with what's in the MOU, and it says the eight minute and fifty-nine seconds of the, eight minutes and fifty-nine seconds of the time of the dispatch and ninety percent calls for urban transit, that's our, our goal. So what you're giving us, so is an average, which isn't a percentage.
I'm giving you both.
Where's, where?
So, the average is the five minutes and eight seconds is the tiny number, but the eight minutes and twenty-seven seconds is what we do ninety, ninety percent of the time.
Okay, okay, that just wasn't, the ninety percent wasn't there, okay. Is the twelve hundred and twenty-three, or sirens on, preach one of them?
No, um, I would, I would be willing to say, no, ma'am, and, and I can differentiate between the two, if that would be helpful.
How about, how about going back to the, the back chart and tell me which one of the incident group, type group, which ones of those has sirens?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay, that, that doesn't do it either, okay.
Right, but I could, I can, I can gather that data, it's on our report.
I'm just, I just, I just thought if that matched any of these, I wanted to know, but you don't need to dig deeper, my dog tells me every time. She loves to, she loves to augment your all's work for the neighborhood to know you're coming, so.
Wait till it's in the backyard.
Off those two numbers up, on this one page with the, um, you know, you have one thousand two hundred and twenty-three, um, and then on the previous page, you have one thousand two hundred and fourteen. Uh, I guess it's only like a nine difference, but is that? What, what, where's, where does the extra nine come from? I think that's what it is. Yeah, I mean, wouldn't they be the same numbers?
I would think so, but there are some times that we'll have a fire where we have a, we have a, um, a patient.
Okay.
And so, again, with our reporting stuff, it would go down as a fire, but we would also do a, a patient care report. So there could be some differentiation.
That's good.
Yeah, and that's one thing with the new, um, federal, uh, reporting system, that we'll be able to put down several different incidences. So we'll be able to track those, those type things.
Okay.
Better and easier. And then the difference between the two numbers here is, um, so we, we have EMS incidences, that's what we're getting called to, but there are times that we send, um, more than one unit. So our accident, so that number down below is how many responses we have. So each unit gets a response, even if they're going to the same incident. We like to track that, just because it shows potential wear and tear on our, on our video. So here again, we had, um, four EMS incidences going on at one time. Five times in, uh, the last quarter. And, and four were going on for an average of twenty-two minutes before it went down to three. And then, and again, that's just, that's just for us, that's not overlapping with National.
Is that critical?
That's just any call that we, we go out to. So it could be, it, um, very seldom do we do the assist, but it could be that, it could be, um, you know, depending on what they tell Dispatch, um, you know, if they say they're having trouble breathing, but it could be because they stubbed their toe, we're gonna go as if they're having trouble breathing, we find out different. So it could be something like that. Uh, Chief Complaints, we're, uh, according to MOU, reporting on our top ten chief complaints, I believe there are probably only nine here, so that's, that's what we had, um, is only nine complaints. So chest pain discomfort is the chief complaint, uh, the top one. And that'll come in more of what we find when we get on scene. What we would like to do is kind of really drill down to what Dispatch has told to them, what we find on scene, and try to sync those things up as best we can, but, you know, that's a, sometimes that can be a hard thing to do. Some, some folks just know the key words they need to say to get folks to come in a hurry.
Yes.
Seeing them.
Hey, we're, we're fully transparent.
And here we report on our bystander CPR, AED use, and, uh, and then CPR that our members performed. And this is all information gathered from the PCRs that our, our medics will do once they come back from the, from the call.
Is, is, do you guys have a Narcan number?
I do not, but I can get that.
If you could send that, I am interested, just total, I guess, just the volume of that, uh, that you're going through, because I'm assuming it's still going up.
Commissioner, do, do you want to just know the calls in which we, we deploy Narcan, or do you know the number of doses we? Because sometimes.
You're right, because some.
Sometimes you may do multiple, but you're just more interested in the call, right? We can provide that.
Call has the Narcan.
We can provide that.
Yeah. Thank you.
And some of these numbers may be off of, uh, the bystanders doing CPR, and they quit for whatever reason and walk off before we get there, then we're not gonna know that, uh, so it wouldn't be reported here. So unfortunately, it, it's just hard to encompass all of the data we'd like to see. So that is it as far as fires, um, is there any other questions I can, anything else? All right.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having us. Um, as always, we are always happy to be here to explain, um, the work that our providers do every single day out in the field, probably serving the Athens Clark community. Uh, this is our presentation from, uh, the previous quarter. Uh, you'll be getting our latest presentation for what we call Quarter One of twenty twenty-five, uh, shortly. It generally takes about twenty days for my numbers to close, um, so I can get you the most accurate data, um, possible. So looking at our system structure, uh, very similar to the fire department. So, looking at our system structure, uh, very similar to the fire department, our total number of response vehicles are, so in this market, we have two quick response vehicles. One is staffed by a solo paramedic, and the other is so, is staffed by a supervisor paramedic. Total for the system, we have a total of availability of eleven transporting ambulances. This gives us five at our seven center station, four at our east side station, three at our headquarters, and one out of west side.
What, what's a one pair, I mean, that, that was kind of confused me a little bit, so go back to that, and you might have just said it. Nine with one twelve-hour, what's a QRV?
Our QRV is our quick response vehicle, so what it does, it's staffed with a, a paramedic that can upgrade the call. So most calls are sent in the Athens Clark market to, with one paramedic and one advanced level EMT. This paramedic can augment the ambulance to upgrade it to have two paramedics on board. Um, it can also augment, um, the double advanced level ambulances that are allowed part of the MOU, um, to allow them to staff with a paramedic as well. It allows, um, more parent, even though it's an additional, only one additional person, it actually greatly increases the whole ability of paramedics, because it's, it sends a single person in a SUV versus dumping a whole other ambulance and not having that unit available for transport.
Oh, okay, so the QRV is not a?
Correct. It is a, it's a Ford Explorer. Yep, it's a, the same as your, uh, your police officers.
A paramedic.
Yes, and all the equipment that's, uh, required for a paramedic level. And then we also do have our interfacility division that has an additional, up to, I should say, an additional five ambulances that can actually infiltrate into the system, um, if need be. So we can, um, at National, we are very fortunate that we can inful- inundate the system with ambulances as, uh, peak demand requires.
What's that IFT?
That's our interfacility division, so if you need, correct. So if you were to go from Pied, uh, St. Mary's to Piedmont Athens, uh, that would be an interfacility, uh, level, interfacility ambulance. It's still staffed the same way. Usually it's a paramedic and an EMT basic.
Are they, are they posted onsite for those reasons, or they, they?
No, they are specifically for, they are specifically for interfacility, but if there's not an interfacility call going on, and they are just sitting downtime, which generally they have, because they run, so from a metric standpoint, generally our interfacility transport trucks out of a twelve-hour shift actually are working about a third of their shift, so they have downtime and availability. So if the system got inundated, or if I had a low acuity patient going from St. Mary's to Piedmont, and a chest pain call came in and they were on the way, I can actually divert that resource to that, and then they can go back and do their interfacility transfer after that.
Through the station locations, is this, is this National EMS locations, or are these locations at different firehouses?
Nope, these are all, um, operations that are currently controlled and operated by us. With the exception of our west side station, the west side station is shared, actually it's just over the line with Oconee County, and it is in their fire station eight.
But, yeah, that's not ours.
So that's not, there's, it's a different county.
Okay.
And this is just a breakdown of where our different trucks are actually coming from.
These are, there's something later on called coverage zones, and it has a little chart with units in it. And unless I missed something, those are like different, like three oh seven on this one says it's on the east side, where on, on that later one, it says it's at center.
So that could be, that's because of where they get moved to throughout the systems, throughout the system status.
It's a float truck. It can float wherever stationed it needs to be. Okay, thi- this kind of gave me the idea that they were like parked here at night or something, you know, the one, the later on, the one on the.
Any of the ones, any of the ones that you see that are twelve-hour trucks can be floated to where the demand is.
Okay.
So, and, and I can clarify that for the reports going forward, that's, that's not an issue, but, and, and like I said, sometimes the way my brain works is I see that, and I know what I'm talking about, but, you know, to deliver the most accurate information, I can, that's perfect, that's okay. So, once again, looking at system saturation, um, that, um, the same a- as the fire department, this is how many times, you know, an ambulance was committed, or two ambulances were committed, et cetera, et cetera, and how much time they were actually committed. Our ambulance times committed are slightly shorter than the fire department. That's just because, um, well, they are, with us, they are coming generally to higher priority calls, where, um, a lower priority call, abdominal pain, nausea, vomiting, um, back pain, falls, uh, we can go in and generally we can pick up the patient and clear the call a lot sooner than if it's a chest pain call, difficulty breathing call that requires more, um, more action. Uh, the good news is, is for the system saturation during that quarter, we actually, we at National only documented twelve times, no unit were actually able to respond or had a prolonged, uh, response due to distance. This is something that we've been working on for a long time, uh, to reduce that overall, uh, need for wait or the potential for mutual aid. So if it was another county, for example, Rockdale County, and they run five ambulances, I would generally, a sixth call came in, I would get mutual aid from Newton County or Tapp County. Um, here, uh, because we run Oconee County, the closest neighbor, um, it would still be our unit. So it was only twelve times that we actually just didn't have anybody to send.
Just explain that to me. Okay, I'm hanging out at my house, and I'm having a heart attack, and I'm one of these twelve times. What happens?
So at that point in time, uh, the response goes to the supervisor. Um, one of the QRVs would be dispatched to that location to start patient care, because they don't, generally they don't transport, so to have both of them tied up on a transport would be exceptionally rare. Um, if you were having a heart attack, you'd also get dispatched, you know, you would get the fire department, which would respond at a BLS level until one of our transporting units could fit, could free up, or we would then start the process of calling mutual aid from a surrounding county.
Okay.
And with these kind of cases, you have some, um, you have some information about whether a transport was even required?
I could, I could pull that, I could pull that data. A lot of times, those, the twelve, and I guess without looking at it specifically, if an ambulance was en route, say, to, you know, you know, a, a patient for a lower level call, a priority level two call, and then your call came in for chest pain, we're going to divert that ambulance in real time to the chest pain and have the fall, you know, and, and, you know, have that lower priority two call standby.
That, that would be reassuring to get that, you know, information on those twelve calls.
Sure.
And maybe whether there's a QRV or it was lower level, and, you know, that would be helpful. I agree with the mayor on that, yes.
So just looking at a call from up, I'm actually going to have to cheat at this screen, because my eyes aren't, what's the use to me? Um, uh, December was a relatively busy, uh, was relatively bu- busy month, but October was our busiest month, uh, historically. In this market, October is the busiest month. It is when college students decide to, uh, be college students. Going back quite a few years myself, I remember October being an interesting month. Um, a- and then November, when they go home for Thanksgiving, we actually just generally, we just generally lose volume on the nine-one side, and then we pick back up in November. So when we look at what we are staffing here, uh, when I say an ALS unit staffed, that is a paramedic level ambulance. So that is currently staffed with one paramedic and one advanced EMT. So eighty percent of the units that we provide are staffed a hundred percent of the time with one paramedic and one advanced EMT. When I utilize the BLS staffed units, which are twenty percent of what our units are, those are two advanced EMTs that would be supplemented by the paramedic, either in the supervisor's car or the QRV. So in theory, every single patient here in Athens Clark has the availability to have a paramedic on their, on their call.
What did you say? That was two advanced DMTs?
Two advanced DMTs.
Then you said something else, like?
They could, they could be augmented by a paramedic from our quick response vehicle.
ALS.
This is, sorry.
The ALS.
Uh, the BLS. The BLS units, we call them BLS units for the purposes of the MOU, because they are advanced level EMTs. However, they are advanced level providers. These advanced level EMTs can provide IVs. Um, they can actually transmit EKGs prior to the hospital. They have a list of about, uh, fifteen different medications that they can give. They just, so they differentiate from a paramedic where they can't do manual defibrillation. They can't actually read the EKGs themselves where a paramedic can. Uh, they can't provide, uh, endotracheal intubation, but they can provide advanced airway access. So they are a true, um, they are a true middle road between that and an EMT basic, where an EMT basic is, um, CPR, defibrillation on an AED, really no medications, um, to that. So, um, the advanced level, so when I say that, it's just, that's how we've, in the MOU, um, described BLS units are advanced level trucks.
Okay. I, I just have a question, well, some input on this, because it's so interesting. I know I'm not going to be able to remember the acronyms and the definitions of these, so I'm assuming that the next checkpoint will be a repeat and updated of this. Can you, Carol's been writing them down, I've been writing them down, I don't have this printed out, but, um, it'd be great if the slide contained.
Right, right.
Written out first, before the acronyms get going in more detail, as well as, um, how you define the staffing of these two. I thought that was really interesting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have space? You have space on this slide? No extra slide?
I mean, I don't know, I don't mind. I'll put an extra slide in there.
No, no.
No, we don't want those.
Just fill the space, fill the space.
Just the glossary sheet.
Thanks, because, because this is an ongoing update, and then that'll help us click more with the new information.
Yeah.
Because I may not remember all of this from one report to the next.
You know, and, and, and I completely, I completely understand, you know, this is the fourth state that I've done business in, and sometimes, even in my brain, I get bumbled and jumbled, so.
Well, since we're doing the staffing, what is the staffing with the, uh, with the fire department now? I mean, EMS, you guys, you were saying you have advanced, everyone is an advanced DMT. Do you have anyone lower than an advanced?
You're asking about?
You, you still, just to clarify, you have EMT?
Our EMT.
It's EMTs and paramedics.
Correct.
Is there anyone lower than a?
We do have EMTs that work for us.
Okay.
Um, they are, so when they come out, so when they come out of school, um, we actually are now doing an academy style, kind of as the fire departments and police departments do. So when they actually get out, they start in our interfacility transfer division to gain experience, and then if they wind up being an employee that we want to retain or engage, um, they have the opportunity to go to advanced school, uh, on the cost of, you know, and National, we pay the cost of that and put them through that and pay them to go, you know, once again, to progress them and, um, then if they like being, and, and there's nothing stopping them, once they become an EMT, from going directly to paramedic school if they choose to. We like to, we and our company generally do the step process, because it gives them experience at each different level. Um, you know, EMT basic really gets really good at talking to people. Um, EMT Vance takes that level and actually incorporates it with some skills, um, that are, you know, truly life-saving. Not saying that EMT basics don't, because EMT basics have the basics of life-saving, defibrillation, CPR, you know, BBMing, uh, Narcan administration, you know, that, those true core, uh, things, and they just continue to build on them until they get to the paramedic level, which is truly a clinician level where they're thinking, you know, not just, uh, you know, the leg is broken, I need to splint it, you know? We get, even though that's a simple example, but we go on to, why did the, you know, the paramedic level, why did the leg break, you know? Did they pass out? Is this a cardiac event, you know? The, you know, and then managing the pain, also making sure, you know, that they didn't have a cardiac problem at the same time, assessing neurological function, because, you know, because you broke your leg, you might have, a- and that's what, a- and that's how we build upon the building blocks.
And, and so the EMT basics, so you said we're at the training facilities or something?
They're in our transfer division.
The transfer, are the trans, the ones that are doing?
IFT division.
Division, okay.
Yes.
That was that other acronym. Yeah, okay, got it. And the EMT advanced, and do you guys pay for that, like, for each level of training?
Yep.
Okay, so there, there's a good opportunity there for people who want some career work, go in there, get up there.
So we just recently, don't like to get too much off topic, but we recently graduated a, uh, EMT basic academy. Uh, not only they were paid as our employees to go to the academy, um, they got EMT certification out of it. So far, we have a hundred percent pass rate of that class, which is phenomenal. And, uh, we not, and then we also paid for their initial certification, and, um, and then once they pass, they actually get a, a, a pay raise and assigned to a shift, so.
Because the paramedic training is quite extensive.
Correct.
Yeah.
And if they get to that level, we are willing to, you know, at priority in National, we are willing to invest in their education. Um, we're actually working on, um, collaborations with local partners to actually bring our paramedic academy in-house as well to develop the future paramedics, because we believe that it's just such a, uh, you know, a- as I always say, that bus of sixty medics that I would love to show up is never going to show up. So we have to create outside-the-box ideas of how to create and move forward.
Where's your EMT academy?
Uh, currently, it's in our locate, this past time, our location was in Conyers, um, which is where my office sits, um, that's our, um, however, it's, um, it's depending based upon the needs of the organization. Um, we could absolutely house it here in our Athens Clark area. We have a beautiful training center here. It's just that when we did the D and D the last time, Conyers was where the need was.
And then what was the, how was the fire department going with it?
So I believe, uh, not to get into specifics, we just graduated one class out of our rookie school. Um, nine of them come on shift, and, uh, eight of them are now going to fire to do that aspect, and they'll graduate in July. So that'll probably put us somewhere around eighty-five, ninety percent of EMT.
Yeah, right in between there, I would lean higher, higher percentage of that.
We have some of our older folks who were here prior to us going that route, that have gone back and got it, and then some obviously have retired and we've replaced them with new folks, but it is a requirement.
The EMT, that's EMT basic.
Yes, ma'am.
That is the majority, yes, ma'am. We do have advanced, we do have an older designation of intermediate. We have a couple that are paramedic. By and large, most of ours are EMT basic, yes. Which is vastly different from where we were ten years ago, when we were only first responders. But we're, we're still, we're still in the infancy stages of an EMS program. We've come along very, very well, and we're pretty robust for, for what we were starting with. Um, but we, we're, we're quite, quite content with manageable growth.
So here are our coverage zones, and this is just, the biggest thing on is, is the map to show you where our stations are. So, um, our headquarters for Athens Clark is in Watkinsville, um, where we also, uh, have the west side station, which is on the Athens Clark-Oconee line, and we actually do share that building space with, um, Oconee County. Um, it is in their firehouse. Our center station is underneath the cell phone towers, uh, can't miss it. Um, that's where, um, a majority of, uh, that's where bulk of our responses come from, along with the east side station, um, which is, uh, tucked over there nicely on the, the east side. So, uh, one of the, so on system processing, our alarm processing time for Athens Clark is at ninety-one percent. So this means from the time that we get the call to sixty seconds after the call is received, it is being dispatched to the trucks within ninety-one percent of the time. According to the, uh, with our MOU, we're actually supposed to be at ninety percent. So we are actually, we're exceeding it by one percent. Um, total response time for both, this is all calls together, priority one and priority two calls, is eleven minutes and twenty-nine seconds, which actually is, um, on a national average, relatively, um, impressive. You know, our goal is to, for priority one calls is eleven fifty-nine, um, is where we want to be. So we're beating it on both level calls, um, with licensed sirens and non-licensed sirens. Total number of non-transports is thirty-three point six percent, so that's our, what we call in the industry, dry runs. It's an average, we're actually a little bit lower for our dry runs here in, uh, Athens Clark. We're actually transporting more people to the hospital than the national average. The national average is right around forty percent for dry runs.
I have a quick question on the, on the, does that mean you tended to them onsite, but didn't have to remove them from the site?
Correct.
The right definition?
Correct. That's what, when I utilize the no transports, then that's what it is. It wasn't necessarily a cancel, because there's times that fire might get there first and cancel us, that's a totally different number.
Do you have any, um, information on how many of those non-transports were people that turned down a ride to the hospital for financial reasons? I, I know at least two people who have done that.
We don't track that data, and it's because from the providers, from our provider standpoint, I don't want them to get into the business. My goal is for them, and I back them a hundred percent, is never to tell the people about what it may cost, that it's just better to go to the hospital, get treated and transported, and then, and then come in the backside and deal with, you know, deal with people like, you know, the businessmen later. And I know that sounds, because I don't want them to have to think about the bill, and trust me, and, and I have, you know, at the end, I would love, you know, if the commission has time, I'd love to talk about our rates and answer questions, because I do have a lot of information that I think coming from me is, will help under- lot of information that I think coming from me is, will help under, help better understand where we're coming from and everything like that.
And we'll have that time when we get through this.
So.
Yeah, on this one, on the total response time, on the, on the MOU, it says total response time, eight minutes and 59 seconds of the time of dispatch and 90% of calls. And that's, that percentage is not on here.
Okay, I'll have to add that, it's, I already have it, I'd have to go back and look at my priority, my, sorry, my Power BI, we do track that. If I omitted that, then I.
And maybe, I mean, if you're, if you're taking, taking this and you're differentiating between the priority one and priority two, imagine priority one is the higher priority.
Correct.
You know, it would be great to have that as well, I mean, so. That, that percentage is important to get.
Yeah, and those are, those are percentages that I already look at on a weekly basis that are already on my, and I can actually get them, those I can actually get before I even leave today. So our average response time for priority one calls is eight minutes and 46 seconds, which is right where we want to be. So our top 10 chief complaints will vary differently from the fire department, because the fire department is responding to those higher priority calls to, to take care of the citizens, which we really greatly appreciate. However, our, we go on other calls that they don't, so our number one complaint is sick person. Sick person can be anywhere from, I stubbed my toe to, unfortunately, it could be a person having chest pain, it's what dispatch, it's that category when dispatch doesn't know what to categorize it as. Falls are our number two calls, followed by breathing problems, then traffic accidents. We do wind up going to traffic accidents with the fire department, doesn't, just as our, our law enforcement partners will, will call us out to check somebody out after a motor vehicle accident, so we go to quite a few of them and then chest pain, unconscious fainting, psychiatric calls, abdominal pain, convulsions and seizures, and then medical alarms round off our top, our top calls.
And those are in order of frequency?
Correct. And those, those actually pretty much stay static from quarter to quarter, as much as our people go out and say, oh man, it's great to do a job that doesn't have routine, there is some routine and chaos as well.
Can we get, I mean, the police, the fire department gave us like numbers for those? If there are any numbers, throw them in.
Sure.
Okay.
And this is our bystander CPR, so this is what's reported. So the way we get this data is through the provider's PCR. So it's a, once again, it can be different from the fire department, only because we can only extrapolate the data that our providers put into their reports. So we had reports of five bystander CPRs, three of, out of those five, there was an AED used. Our USTAN survival rate for the past quarter was 2.202%. So that is, I'm just about, so what that is, is if anybody, God forbid, anybody went into this, in this room in a cardiac arrest and we jumped in and we started CPR and AED shock and the ambulance got you back and you got to the hospital and you didn't make it, that does not count as a survival. Even though you initially survived the event, you didn't survive what we consider a survivable event, that is discharged from the hospital. So that means now we'll do the same scenario, we get you back, you go to the hospital, the hospital gets you, you know, whatever interventions may be needed, then you go to the floor, ICU generally, and then step down and then discharge. So out of the cardiac arrests that we had in this market, out of that, we had a 2.02% survival rate, which sounds really low, but for a urbanized market, that's actually a pretty good survival rate. The national average for out of hospital cardiac survival is very low. And one of the ways we can do this and national is more than, you know, is very encouraged to, to do this, is to partner with our local governments and make each area a heart-safe community by providing community CPR and working with our governments in our, you know, our areas to provide, you know, public access AEDs, which is something that my, my training administrator has been tasked with. I know it sounds weird that it's training administrator's job, but that's kind of what, they review a lot of this data as well with our QA manager and that's one of the things to pump it up. Some of your highest performance cities such as Seattle, Austin, Travis, Texas, their survival rates are around 10% out of hospital. So where other cities which are more urbanized, such as Boston, you know, even Los Angeles have about, you know, a lower survival rate than that. A lot of it comes out too, is who's trained in CPR and how fast you can get an AED to them. Because even though the fire department's coming and their response rates are, their response times are impeccable, it's still, if they, nobody, if somebody went into cardiac arrest right now and even though we have paramedics and EMTs in the room, if nobody did anything, the chances of survival are slim. This is truly one of those few times in life that really seconds matter. And then we told, we reported a total of 38 CPRs performed within that last quarter.
And then this is just central dispatches numbers that they sent us. You see they have the bystander CPR, which I would assume is, they can confirm over the phone while they're talking with, with the caller.
What is the APCO, like column?
So APCO is their, without, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but APCO is the EMD process that they use, so emergency medical dispatch. So in this market, if you actually call 911, they would be able to give you pre-arrival instructions. So if I was having, if I was having chest pain, they would say, you know, part of their pre-arrival instructions are have the patient relax, unbutton their top collar, you know, don't have them exert themselves. If you have aspirin and they're not allergic, give them aspirin prior to arrival, those type of things.
So the MOU says CPR instructed him with the ACC 911, it says how many times CPR instruction was provided by 911 communicator officer to bystander performing CPR? But that seems like it would be a broader, like, you know, it would be broader, this is, this, this in here says CPR specifically, so it would be good to know that since that was in there.
I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to them and get some clarity on that and then make sure that that gets forwarded on.
Okay.
To everybody. But that, that is our final slide, I didn't put a slide with a question mark, but.
So like in 2018, 17 and 18, there were two gentlemen that came to every single mayor commission meeting and talked about the, the ambulance service not being available and to respond to calls and they, they had a different market that they were going after it. And I guess between 2018 and today, what changed? Is, is national new to Athens or what happened?
So.
What's going on?
Within those, within that time, National was acquired by the second largest ambulance company in the country. Priority ambulance is our, is the, is the owner of us. With a larger company, I mean, yes, sometimes larger companies bring bureaucracy and unnecessary things, but our, our CEO, who was the original founder, little background, is, was a former executive for another large ambulance company. And one of the things he didn't like was the way that it ran as a corporation. He wanted it to continue to be a local service, but he wanted that national backing, no pun intended, that's just our name, that national backing that actually came along with it. And that's really what has changed, is that priority took ownership of National during those years and over those years, we've brought in different talent that has taken it. Our, our original owners, the Atkins, were our wonderful people and delivered a phenomenal product for that period of time. But with the national push behind us, we have access to resources, financial resources such, that we've been able to propel our wages higher than, you know, than a lot of other, a lot of other places. We are one of the highest, for EMS, we're one of the highest paid agencies in this area. We bring benefits that rival other national companies that wouldn't necessarily be a local, you know, mom and pop shop. And that EMT training pipeline that I talked about earlier, that's been a huge indicator. We've also had some really dynamite changes in management. Tracy LeFlemme is my operations manager for this area and Tracy grew up as a medic to now a great manager in this area and Tracy spent her whole time here. So if anybody knows what this market needs, it's Tracy. And under her leadership, we've been able to recruit and retain qualified personnel and that's really what it is, 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 you know, I'm one of the few people that I, I feel blessed that when I go to my weekly staffing reports for, on a national basis, that I go, we're pretty good this week because of that recruitment and retention and, and just the quality, you know? Some ambulance services will hire anybody, as we say, with a patch and a hole, right? They, they're certified to do the job, we don't do that. We only hire who we think is the best for our market.
You have formal contracts with the hospitals?
Correct, so we are actually, we have an MOU, so you, the MOU is with the, with our contract provider, but our contract is with St. Mary's and Piedmont Athens.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, two more follow-up questions. One, back to that MOU, system structure key performance indicator, number five, do you guys, it gave some averages of the daily ambulances, but on this, it says to please raw, give some raw data, not averages, so the daily number of ambulances in AC in the daily with paramedics, hopefully that'd be easy to do because you have the averages. So I, I'd like to make sure we get that. And I also have a request on the response time, is there any way to build that trust? Since I, I love that, that way that Johnson is speaking there and I think if I could see some raw data on the response times as well, that would be really helpful so that we can build that trust and know that for sure, because I keep getting questions on that. And I'd love to go into this new era of being more trusting.
So with the, with the raw data, it would still, because of patient privacy concerns?
Right.
And HIPAA, I would still have to redact certain amounts of it.
Of course, of course.
So, but like, I don't have it for here today.
Yeah, oh yeah, yes.
Just to show you, and I do, when I do say transparency, I am truly a transparent person. I believe that that's the, I believe that's the way to do business as much as I can be. This is the raw data, is not, is redacted for patient privacy purposes for Oconee County. So I'm just, so I have no issues showing it.
I would just love to, I would love to, I got, I got three years and eight months or nine months more to this term, so, but I'd love to feel really confident about our EMS service before the end of that, sooner and the better. So this is really great, been a great report and I'm eager to hear what you're gonna share on the costs as well, since we hear about that a lot as well.
As do we and don't think that we're not sensitive to that. Any other, Mr. Mayor, any other?
Certainly, I mean, and I'll be interested in Mr. Ben Zeller's colleague getting into this, but as he indicated, of course, the zone licenses are held by the two hospitals, by St. Mary's and Piedmont Athens Regional, and then they contract with, with National who's now owned by Priority. We in Oconee County alike have each been contributing $100,000 to the operation and each of us have a separate MOU with the hospital, us with Piedmont Regional, Oconee County with St. Mary's, and that's been the case for over a decade now. I certainly would expect that probably costs have increased and so, you know, I have at least some amount of flexibility in my mind when it comes to what future costs may be as a partner in this operation. But, but among the prerequisites for me in any partnership is that our own employees are covered and as we saw in the prior presentation, our employees are not covered by this operation right now. And so if chest pain was not the cause of the initial visit, I have to imagine when our employee opens up that $3,600 bill, chest pain is going to ensue at that point. So I'd, I'd like us to figure out how we can get into a dynamic where we, with absolute certainty know that our employees, much like Oconee County's employees, because I've had this conversation with Oconee County Commission Chair Daniel, are, are all covered. We want to make sure we're in an environment where people have a solid platform underneath them and at least financially right now, that's not the case.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your question and statement, I appreciate it. One of the things we currently, you know, with the hospitals, we're currently a year-to-year agreement and we're happy with that. However, as a, you know, as an individual and as a representative of the company, I am, you know, more than happy to sit down with the hospitals and the county commission and review our current MOUs and our current contracts and look at, you know, the deliveries of services right now and do an actual pro forma and look at, and look at how we can make sure that, you know, the, at the very least, the employees of the counties are covered to make sure that they're not getting any surprise bills. Because I do have quite a bit to say about that and, you know, and, and to talk about our rates, because I do have them and I'm, like I said, and this is, you know, an open session, I have no problem, you know, providing that because of the transparency.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to confirm that you stated that Athens Park County and Oconee County contributes $100,000, is that correct? Does that go towards operations, like just put a dent in it and I was curious if your company seeks reimbursement or is reimbursed by insurance companies? And are we upside down and how, how we feeling?
So the, what we are very grateful for what the commission and the taxpayers give us for the cost of readiness. However, when we talk about, when we talk about ambulances, there's a cost of readiness that just goes along with them. Now, each, each brand new ambulance generally would cost from the ground up, but I'm not talking about buying the unit. So if I was to come here and I was to start a brand new ambulance, an additional unit, it would generally cost about a million dollars in capital to, to, to put up. So every ambulance that we put up, you know, priority as a whole, we, we look at as a million dollar investment. In order to recoup those costs, some of them, a lot of the business model that we do is, not necessarily in this market, national, we do mostly 911. Our sister company, Central, is mostly an interfacility transfer company. So they make their money back by moving patients from one hospital to the other. And they can move those trucks on a 12-hour shift, they can run those trucks almost all 12 hours, so they can, that reinvestment gets recouped relatively fast through insurance. When it comes to a 911 service, that truck has to be available for that 911 service, regardless of if it's rolling wheels or regardless of if there's a payer. Where as a hospital, I can contract with a hospital and say, if the insurance gets denied on this patient, then you're going to pay us an agreed upon rate within that contract. So there will always be compensation coming back to us. A lot of times, it's, it's not necessarily like on that, it's not necessarily at a loss, but it's at a, it's net neutral for us in order for us to, to provide that service so that those patients can get moved to where they need to be. So in the 911 service, that, part of that $100,000 is just going towards the cost readiness. So to have those ambulances standing by, ready to go on 911 calls. The second part is to, in order to not only continue to pay the electricity and the gas and all the little operating things within that ambulance, then yes, we do bill the patients in order to recoup that.
How long has it been, 100,000? Has it been for?
Over 10 years, yeah, that, that, I mean, that was kind of what we began with and that's what we've continued with.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, not only are ACC employees covered, but UGA insurance does not cover that ambulance transport and that's by far the largest employer in the entire region and we've got a couple thousand employees here, several thousand, plus the student population. I mean, you showed those numbers scooching up there in October, you know, it's, I, I wonder if we could bring UGA into this negotiation. I mean, I, I would think that they would have as much of a stake ensuring that we have adequate ambulance service in this community. And, and I do know people who've turned down that service, knowing that they were gonna end up with a $3,500 bill, myself, my husband was stung by a wasp and I was halfway across town. I was like, hold your horses, I'm coming home and I'll drive you the two blocks to the hospital, because literally we live two blocks from the hospital and, you know, we were looking at the $3,500 ambulance bill.
I, you know, I hate to point fingers, right? Because, you know, and not getting deeply political in any climate or anything, but even from a perspective, we are very, you know, from a national perspective, we are very sympathetic with what we have to charge. And a lot of it comes down to the insurance companies. We are the second largest ambulance company in the country by both, by patient volume and it is very hard to get. And it is very hard to get any of the insurance companies to actually sit down at the table and negotiate in network, in network status with us. Because they rather just, they rather just hear us, hear our billing department buzz in their ear and pass it off to their, to their subscribers than actually have to sit down at the table and, and put some pen to paper. That's not all of them. Blue Cross Blue Shield is one of the things that they did many years ago that was a very big detriment to the ambulance industry as a whole. And this is nationwide. I have the same issues in Massachusetts, West Virginia, and Virginia, all places I've worked. Is if you call 911 for an ambulance and, and number one, the level has to reach your deductible, just like any other service. And say you've met your deductible for the year, and that ambulance ride should be paid in full. But what they do is instead of sending the check directly to us as a company, they send it to the patient, and they put it in the patient's name. So the patient gets that with no explanation, it's just a check in the mail, with no explanation of why this check is here. They go to the bank and they cash it themselves. That's a Blue Cross Blue Shield thing. Our other insurances don't do that, but our own employees. If one of our own employees takes an ambulance ride, they get, they will actually, believe it or not, they will get the same bill that everybody else does. Now, our employees do have the benefit, do have the built in benefit that once they get the bill, they just, they contact their manager, and it comes to me, and that bill gets, you know, that bill gets taken care of through our charity program, just as whatever, you know, as we have. But that is one of the, that is one of the battles that we currently have. So our, our rates, and like I said, I'm more than willing to share this and send this as an email follow up. Our current rates for BLS emergency is $3,206.78. That's a base rate. ALS emergency is the same. We've just decided to do the same across the board. It just, it is just cleaner. It doesn't make us look like we're trying to charge more, even though, because so many of our calls bring paramedics with them, it's just clean across the board.
What was that, 32?
3206.78. ALS Level 2 is $4,427.50. So this is a very critically ill patient that may or may require three or more medications or two or more advanced level procedures, such as intubation and manual defibrillation.
So you are gonna need another slide.
Our cost per mile is $47.82. This is currently in line with what our Medicaid, our Medicare payers allow for. Georgia Medicaid currently does not pay for mileage. And then, and then if we have a, if we have a, we have a couple different rates for telehealth, which the good news is right now, if you're a Georgia Medicaid recipient and you choose, so we come out to see you have a stuffy nose and you've called an ambulance, which does happen, and we offer you telehealth. You get to talk to a nurse practitioner. This is actually no cost to the patient. And we bill their, Georgia Medicaid pays for that, currently at about $750. So those are the bulk of our rates. We do have a few more, but those are interfacility rates. They don't, they wouldn't apply to any, anybody for 911. They could apply to your constituents if they went from hospital to hospital. But generally, those are, those are easier to get, to work with insurance companies to pay than the street 911 calls, believe it or not. Even though every call by definition that comes from 911 is an, an emergency call.
How does telehealth work? Like, I've called before, so are we talking to you all?
No, so, so what happens is if you call 911 and you said, you know, you, you have the flu, and we get out there and, you know.
Not call ambulance, but I have a telehealth number.
Yeah, we have our own, I'm just using that, this is a example, not you, Commissioner, I'm sorry. You know, you know, say you called and you have the flu and you called 911, or somebody called 911 for you because they thought you were having a hard time breathing, you're like, no, 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 I just know it's the flu. I don't want to go to the hospital. We can actually offer you telehealth services through our own program.
I see.
That is free to the patient. So you actually don't receive a bill at all for that. And because Georgia Medicaid picks up the cost on that. It's still part of a, it's still part of a, you know, that pilot program. And fortunately, that was not one of the, that was not one of the programs that have been recently affected by Medicare cuts.
So is Medicare the only entity that's considered in network?
Even Med, yes.
You don't have, there's not a example of an insurance that has you guys as in network?
Currently in the state of Georgia, no. And that is, that is nationwide. And that is whatever in the, and no matter what the size of the company is, I could tell you our number one, our number one competitor on a national level, they are also out of network for all their services.
There might not be an in-network option.
So we are currently actively negotiating with several insurance companies due to, due to confidentiality agreements. I unfortunately am not allowed to say which ones. To go in-network with them because now, so the No Surprise Act that was signed into federal legislation under the previous administration, did not include ground ambulances. The, it only included air ambulances. 12 states currently, including the great state of West Virginia, just signed a law for No Surprise Act for ground ambulances. We, as a ground ambulance provider, are actually in great support of these laws. Because what they do is they force the insurer to actually come to the table. They force the insurer to pay the ambulance service direct, and they set a fair rate that won't kill the insurance company, won't kill the consumer, and won't kill the ambulance provider. And unfortunately, there was a bill in this last session, unfortunately, it was killed before it got out of committee. I have got, and I, I got to, you know, get to present recently to Oconee County and presenting to this commission today, if you can, you know, really find it, when this bill comes up, I will be more than glad to email all the commissioners. We ask for support from our commissioners and our local elected officials to push our other elected officials at the state level to get something like this done. Because it's only a benefit for all the constituents across Georgia.
This seems like something that we could get unanimous support to ask our state reps, among us, to ask our state reps.
Look, it's good for us to have this understanding of it. It's like you say, pointing fingers, you don't want to do that. But to understand the situation more completely, we do have to know how it interrelates or doesn't interrelate. But it sounds to me like the whole fact that the billing isn't between, that's why it's a surprise. Because it's not going through the service provider for the pay, for the person who made the call.
Do you know if the local other places like Madison County or people have their own EMS? Do they, are their rates lower? Do you know if they're in network or anything about that?
They, I, I can't for certain say that they're in network or not, or what their rates are. But I could tell you that they are, if they, a county like, you know, a county like Madison County, for example, they wouldn't have the power. I mean, we as a national company that has, you know, that has, you know, the, the power and push behind it with national lobbyists, we can't get some of these companies to the table. It would be very, because it's an.
Say S for, like, S for less, right?
Correct.
You know, they might be saying, oh, it's only $1,500.
Any other questions?
If I could maybe just speak up, I will say, I live in Gwinnett County, and we are out of network in Gwinnett County. They are a fire department based, government based ambulance provider, and we're out of network.
And I live in, I live full time in Bryan County, and I could tell you the same thing in Bryan County. You know, and, you know, Oconee, I mean, Oconee County, we are the provider. But, you know, like, I could tell you that, you know, when I was up in Monongalia County in West Virginia, we were, that, that whole service, we were out of network. I worked for a very large private for profit up in Massachusetts. We were out of network. Luckily with the ambulance service, we're able to, we're able to offer benefit to our employees of free, basically free ambulance service. But I, I do want to, one more thing before, before I, before I adjourn. I do want, you know, with the commission and the government, that because we are so sensitive to the bills, yes, I, we need revenue in order for our, to keep our lights on and pay our employees and keep competitive wages. But our billing department is very willing to work with anybody when it comes to bills. You know, all I ask is if they need it, please call that number. And if they don't get the answer that they want, please feel free to reach out to my office, and I will, and I will help them with it personally. We offer discounts. We offer, you know, payment plans that are very, very convenient for everybody. That way, we don't have to, you know, that way we don't have to go abouts and sell it to, you know, and sell it off and burn it, you know.
Is that a number for that?
For?
The billing department?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
Put that on that.
But I, I could put it in my next presentation, absolutely. Because, you know, we do, you know, you know, as our CEO's vision is we want to be a, we want to be that community based ambulance, even though we're a large provider. And I don't want, you know, I don't want anybody to have to not call 911 because of the thought of the cost of their bill. And that's really, that's really the truth. There's so many creative things I can do in the background to make sure that, you know, we have affordability within it. And like I said, we would, we would love, you know, to get a No Surprises Act on a state level. Because it really would help. I mean, every state that has pushed for it is always been supported by, you know, their, their Fire Chiefs Association, their ambulance association. You know, in Massachusetts, which is trying for it right now, I mean, it is sponsored from everybody, from the Fire Chiefs Association to the professional firefighters in Massachusetts and IAF affiliate. So I mean, everybody is, you know, to the American Ambulance Association, which generally represents private for profit ambulance companies. We're all on the same page with this. We just really got to lobby our, our legislators at the state level to get this done.
All right. Well, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Commissioner.
We'll take a quick five minute break. Y'all have been sitting for two and a half hours while Hugh Ogilvy from Public Utilities gets set up. Apologize to you in advance. I'm gonna have to step out at three o'clock sharp and send their questions and ask Commissioner Fisher, Mayor Proton to facilitate that. Hugh Ogilvy's with the Scrum of Public Utilities, and one of the exercises we do every five years is a service delivery plan. Is we want to know what are those things that we need to have built within our water and sewer system in order to sustain the system based on the population? And then just as critically, how are we gonna make things? So this really kind of kicks off that cycle.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, Mayor says this is to talk about our five year update to our service delivery plan. The town agenda today is talk about the plan, its history, the projects that we completed under the 2020 SDP. And we've got some proposed projects to add into this five year update for the 2025 service. I know this, this 20 year plan is updated every five years. With the indication charter, requires us to adapt the plan, our water and wastewater services for all residents. Evaluate what the water system needs over planning period and identify improvements to address them. Go outline a schedule and financial plan for implementing these improvements. Is influences that, of our service that, or the indicators for our service delivery plan. Obviously, with the new feature land use map plan has been working on, we've been working with them on that. Ties into the growth and development. We've got the university in there and all, really the players in the game that drives our services. This is how we rank the, the projects in our service delivery plan. Obviously, the regulatory requirements that's been passed on, such as lead and copper rule, the PFOs, PFOs requirements, EPA and federal government's put out. Those have to be addressed. And then the public health of our community and citizens are right, right in there with that. And rehabilitation and replacement projects. You know, we have a very aging system, very robust system, but it is aging. So that rehabilitation is something that we have to put in there pretty high. And then expansions and extensions to our system. And obviously, we wanted to tie in with y'all's strategic plan as well. This is a kind of a history of our service delivery plan. 1995, it totaled 38 projects and the amount was right at 150 million. And it's kind of grew every year, which you would expect it to. And as we move forward, it will continue to, I'm sure. These are projects that we completed or either are taking on currently. This is a very, this is a big list for the things that we've accomplished during this 2020 service delivery plan. Yes, sir.
Um, I just got a question on, just curiosity. The 4302 Atlanta Highway Tank and Booster Pump Station.
Is that, what is that?
The Atlanta Highway Tank and Booster Pump. We, we replaced the booster pumps at that, at the booster pump station between the tank and Bogart. So we actually replaced those pumps in that station that supplies that, that part of our services. The tank maintenance is a continuous thing that we do every, every five years as well. And that falls into regulatory compliance for the water storage.
You know where it is? Where is that thing?
The water tank?
And the whole station?
The booster pump station, if you go, if you go right past, yeah, the booster pump station is on the right going out to Bogart, if you go past the Pepsi plant or what I used to call Pepsi plant. It's right out there on the right, kind of right across from the entrance to Caterpillar Dozer Drive.
So you know where Barbados is on Lumpkin, there's that big blue thing?
That's Five Point Storage Tank.
Is that the same thing? The booster pump station?
No, sir.
Okay.
The booster pump station.
Five Points Ground Storage Tank?
It's huge.
What does it look like?
Like a space tank, a space station.
It's, it's on the ground. It's on London Street tucked behind. It's kind of crazy.
It's kind of grayish blue.
Okay, okay.
Looks like a big mushroom.
What you're describing is in the air.
So the Atlanta, this is elevated storage.
Drive by there and see.
We have elevated storage tanks scattered throughout the county.
I just thought, I just thought that was the only one, the one on Highway 72. I thought that was.
So there's five elevated storage tanks.
And that's to meet the capacity of the community if there was a shortage?
It, it, it works with our pressures. We have, we have pressure zones in the distribution system. We fill those elevated storage tanks at night and the elevation that ties into the pressures graphically with our system.
So you guys are two, right, John Collier and Harv Mathis? They have twin tanks out there.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thornton, looking at this, had a question.
So the service plans, are they every five years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But they have a 20-year horizon. They look at it every, so it goes out 20 years, look at what your needs are for 20 years, and it's updated every five years. So some projects will continue to stay on that list if they're low priority.
So I guess my question now goes back to District Nine. There is, it's like, I don't see any, is that because we're like on septic tanks out there? There's nothing out there that reflects District Nine.
So the one is a category. So the 1-302 is it's, is a, it is a regulatory requirement. So one stands for the, for the category, the two. Saying that right?
And then I think Commissioner, just to clear confusion, you're, you're not believing that these numbers are associated with commission districts. You're generally recognizing upon the map that there isn't as much in District Nine. And we're going to see a map in just a minute that sort of reflects those septic versus sewer areas.
Okay. Is it 5303?
What was that one again?
It's 5303? I don't know if that's Athena Drive, but it's.
So it's Athena Industrial Park.
Is that Athena Drive?
Yeah, that's in the industrial area. And I would have, no, actually, it's. But I was thinking more of the other side north. And so, and I'm wondering if I'm jumping the gun, because I think when you last presented to us, there was some, you were looking at the quarry and the water coming. That does come in my district.
Yes, ma'am.
And goes all the way. So will we see something like that in this presentation?
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're looking at the design of the quarry in this presentation.
Okay.
You know, when I, when I brought the quarry, y'all a few months ago had a pretty high price tag associated with the whole project. So in this five-year outlook, what we're trying to do is get the design. We're outsourcing that now to buy qualified consultants to work on that design for us. And then figure out if we're going to break it into phases like we had talked about since it has such a high price tag. Maybe trying to do the, the linear part of the project in association with one of the pump stations.
And that definitely was part of District Nine when we talked about that.
Yes, ma'am. We, we also have the, the recycled water that's going to be going that way first.
With Athena, yeah.
Yes, yes, my dear, thank you. Your estimations on the 2020 Service Delivery Plan? How are your estimations derived and how do they change over time? Complete that project?
Cost estimator.
Yeah, the cost estimator on this, or the design page numbers, 2020 Service Delivery Plan page?
Yes.
Derive those estimations and do, are they close when you finish it or are they over?
Some of these are actual costs. Most of these projects are actually, they've already been completed.
Okay.
During this, this timeframe. And the ones that aren't completed, we're in the process of on this page. So these are actual bid.
So if you look at 3-313, which is Sanford Stadium Phase One Interceptor, that's under construction right now.
And that's the price, that is today's price?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a slide just depicted from the 2020 Service Delivery Plan. Small capital program, it's a plant.
So it's what, what we call a fact sheet. And so the service delivery plans, every project will have a fact sheet, which is a one-pager that kind of describes what it's about, what it's going to cost and the category it's under. And so, and it's project number. And it's important because everything ties to those project numbers, especially when it comes to figuring out rates and things like that. And so it's just an example. I don't think he's got one more of what our fact sheets look like.
So when you have a project number, are you, is it tied to a capital plan? Or is it tied to anything like the other departments? I know it's the enterprise fund, but you got my attention when you said project number. Is that an internal thing to public utilities?
It's just an internal thing for them to keep track of numbers without having to say that it's a future drinking water regulations treatment? And they just say 1301?
Yeah, I was just curious if there was a capital budget that you all set aside for, for these items?
And that they do set aside when they budget for them.
I see.
Okay, so they're all, they do get tied to a capital one, but every one of these projects is a capital project.
Okay, okay. Now, are they funded out of the capital project or out of the enterprise?
So the enterprise fund is, is their entire budget, right? And so then underneath that, they'll have rehabilitation, they'll have operations.
Personnel, yes.
And so they have different categories if they pay.
That's right, that's, okay, yes, I remember that.
Does that help?
It does, thank you.
But this is all ratepayer funded.
That's right, yes.
It's what fund?
People pay.
Ratepayers, it's not tax funded, tax bound.
And then this is another fact sheet.
Is this a fact sheet?
Yeah.
This one? Has this been done? Or is this, no, no, it's shaking. But this isn't a make believe, this is a real one from there, from the sewer solutions. So there's a whole then process for the project development here. I mean, that's a lot like, I mean, five, five million dollars isn't that much. There's a lot of septic all over the place, right?
But they, these were, this was supposed to be designed to eliminate septic. We had brought some projects in front of y'all that y'all did not want us to pursue.
We didn't?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is curious to me because I.
Okay, I just said they probably weren't my, they probably weren't my, like over in, in, in. For example, there's a lot of people on septic.
Outside the loop between Danielsville Road and Commerce Road. So that, that are.
Yeah, that was the project you brought us.
Right. Sometimes these, these projects are just a bucket.
Right, right, right.
That's what I mean. This is a bucket of money.
Right, so there's different projects affiliated with this.
Yes, ma'am. And they, and they, if they have an area where they have to do something, then they'll put that out for design. They'll build it and they'll fill it to this bucket of money.
But the goal is to get rid of it, septics.
That would be great. That would take a considerable amount more funds than.
Than this.
Oh, yes. This is just for design alternative to.
Okay.
Come up with a means and method to get sanitary sewer there. Because you're, when you're looking at these outlining areas that are served by septic tanks.
Right.
Graphically, they will not work under our gravity system.
Right.
So you're talking about either multiple pump stations or even small package plants. So it's a significant cost to get the sanitary sewer system out there.
Do I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So I attended a lot of planning committee meetings because I said area weakness or not weakness, but I just want to know as much as I would like to know. And I hear in some of the discussions that the areas that have the septic tanks, there's, there's no future planning or desire to develop what you're describing. Now, I've heard from residents that they don't want their septic tanks. And I've heard from some, we were in that same meeting where the gentleman said, I want my septic tank. But it actually affects development by not having a proper sewer, having a septic tank. It's a yes or a no for a developer. If they have to dish out several hundred dollars more to do a sewer. So I, I hear what you're saying, but it sounds completely opposite from what I've heard in planning. And I know you don't work in planning. Saying it sounds like you're saying I want, we, we're trying to do this throughout our community. And by more sewer systems or sewer capacity, is that what you're saying? In our, throughout our community.
And just to kind of, kind of go back and look at historically, there were some areas, say, in what we call the agricultural residential zone that have such low density that serving them with sewer just would never make sense. You wouldn't find any jurisdiction in the United States that would serve a population density like that with sewers, just not done. There are other places in the community where you have a population density. Commissioner Thornton's neighborhood is a good example. You've got a duplex community, you've got relatively small lots, but they're served right now by septic. And so the question is that how do we transition out of that? A traditional sewer system that runs along maybe a creek shed is what the commission didn't want to see. And they wanted to see some alternatives. So this project category is really focused on those areas where you do have relatively high population density already, but you don't have a sewer system.
And you're not extend for this one? Because I was at a future land use, I was talking to people about stuff. This one is not to extend sewer lines. This is to deal with probably your neighborhood, my neighborhood, things that are in town that don't, or that there already is a building. But are we, we're gonna, I have a question, David, I'll wait.
Question off, off the record, totally, totally off the record. You've made two presentations before, before this commission. Who are you guys? I see Hollis's name here. I'm sorry, I don't know y'all.
I'm, I'm Hugh Ogul, I'm the assistant director.
And what's your name?
Hugh.
Okay, the next question I'll ask you.
How long have you been here?
And, and who are you?
Working on 35 years. I would qualify for that rule A5, by the way.
I'm Diana Jackson. And I work with Jacobs.
Okay, that explains it all. I got y'all.
So, you know, Smoky Road, it's, it's similar to. And I, I, I'll tell you, my, my mom owns a home and, and she doesn't live there anymore because of the septic tank. When it rained, it would, the whole yard would just fill up. And so I actually, five years ago, went to, I think, forgot his name, someone in Public Utilities and asked if she, if the sewer line could be extended. And it was 1.4 miles away from, I guess, is it the sewer main or whatever, the main thing? Pause of that point four. And I was willing to pay for it. And it was something that, oh, you can't do it. We, you, we don't do it like that. It, it, it's, when you do that, you extend it to everyone, up to your mom's house.
Right.
So.
It would, it would borrow money, it's, Smoky Road would also, it would probably had to have a list station.
She moved out of the house and someone else is there now because of that. It was, um.
Something is doable because now that we're seeing new developments on Danielsville, I know that they have water lines now. I mean, the developers putting them in.
That basin that's in between Danielsville Road and Highway 29 has a, has a sewer main.
And the thing about it is, I understand maybe people were fearful of toxic stuff getting into Sandy Creek. I understand that was the reason. But, but the thing about it is the systems now with the water lines are much more easier to manage. They're easier to manage than a septic tank overflowing. So I hope that we do get a, a process or a place that we can extend those water lines. I, I think it was a lot of fear before, but from what I understand now, just on my, just my research, the water lines are much safer now than even.
Septic sewer lines. And, and we don't want to take the whole presentation because they've got to get through kind of their whole capital plan. But Public Utilities has a lot of that underlying information. They know the number of residents of those areas that we had targeted before. They know how many septic systems there are and, and working with public health, who is the regulatory authority around septic systems. We even have some sense of which ones are not doing so well.
But Kelly, this is again before my time. It weren't water lines installed somewhere in my district, but never were hooked up because we left it up to the resident to pay for it.
So, so it, it has been the case for quite a, quite a long time. We have public water lines on every public street in Clark County. And some people, if they have wells, just prefer to continue to keep their well. And so you remember, of course, quite recently, over on, over on Pitter Road, you know, we, we had a public water line along Pitter Road, but people had preferred to keep their wells until they learned that the well water was not safe. And then they were able to quickly tie in.
But we got lines on, in that Danielsville area that are there, but they're not functional. That's what I'm trying to.
So, so two different things, water lines for supply for fresh water, sewer lines for wastewater. We have water lines on every public road, but not sewer.
Okay, that's what I.
Sewer line, the more limited, and then, and Hughes could even send you the map.
Okay, I would like that.
Or GIS map is, is readily available. You can pull that up.
No, I want you to send it to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Technology skills ain't that good.
I think one last comment, just really quickly that when we're having our future land use discussions, there is, a lot of the discussion is surrounded around the areas that have this. there is, a lot of the discussion is surrounded around the areas that have this sewer capacity. So, so by not having sewer capacity, the redevelopment and the, and the building up of the said districts doesn't happen by default. And so it's, it's a really important conversation to see what we can do to extend those sewer lines to the, out to the periphery of the counties, of our county, excuse me.
Well, and to continue with service delivery plan, these are the, the projects that we've got coming up. Uh, the upper, the, the Upper North O'Conne Western Truck Improvements, that, that's for the downtown. And this is, this is supporting growth, and it is targeted, it's tied with our future land uses. The, the future land use map was a, a big part of us, or played a large part in how we planned our service delivery plan, following that development and growth. Cause a lot of the things that these projects are account, are accounting for now are the rezones. You know, the, when we talk about the, the west side of North O'Conne River for the downtown district, you're talking about Clark County Mill and Pecan Foundry, you know, there was a, there was a clothing store, and shoe store, and some other things there along East Brawl. All that's been bulldozed, you got the classic center in the new arena, there's hotels and things that's supposed to be coming there, there, so we, we are trying to support that, that growth.
So what about the eight hundred homes that are coming to Atlanta Haven? So that's additional growth, but, but, but we're focusing on downtown. I hear that a lot, but I know that there are eight hundred homes being built right now, plus one hundred and forty that are starting next year. So that's a thousand homes that at least one person lives in them. And is there any discussion, is that on the?
The developer's going to install the sewer ties in.
We can put it on, the, the developer has to do that.
Yes ma'am.
You know, that's what they're doing now.
Is there any like partnerships that's, uh, you know, sharing the cost of that?
Not, we're not partnering with developers because developers have, they're making money. And I understand that there's revenues, I, I would say how you would look at it, but Athens Clark County is not funding developments. It's the way I've been taught my whole career here.
They, they work it into the cost of.
Wow, it's so high.
Yeah, that's, well, that's, that's why Holland was so high, if there is a shared cost, I think it was, developers can go anywhere.
But they, the developer has to install the water, the sewer, the power, the cable television, the gas, it's not, we, we're not.
The sewer.
The utility is standing out there on its own.
But I think on the flip side of that, I think we, as a county government though, if we, we try to look at our growth, if we want growth to go out a little bit, we as a government may have to put some of that sewer capacity in, somewhere along the county. Yeah, with some of that growth, cause I can't, if we keep trying to put a density, we'll try and put the density, we're not gonna be able to support the capacity, you know, for like downtown right now, we can't do in a more building, because we don't have a capacity, and we, and we're trying to get there.
Well.
I'm just saying, but as we look in our picture, I think we as a government, somewhere along the lines, gotta look at, especially for our residents that live out there, that we gotta take a look at, extending some of that sewer and water out, and I know it's costly to do that, but I think it's something that is a conversation, I think as elected officials that we need to be having. Trying to figure out how we get that capacity, and you've been around long enough. But also getting unification, when they voice of unification.
Tell the truth.
One of the promises was that water and sewer is gonna be extended, to the outer area, and that has not happened. So again, that is incumbent upon us, as we start having these conversations, we look at our future land use map also. Somewhere along that, we're gonna start extending those things out.
I think partnership is, is, it should be considered. I do know in five years or less, two thousand and one homes will be built in District Six in five years or less. I mean, they just, it, it just started about three months ago, and these are four different developers, one, two, three, four, but no, five different developers, five different sites, but I do know the count for the home, for the, for the homes or units, it's actually two thousand and one. And that's five years away, I mean, before the last project is finished.
And that's are on main, they're on main trunk lines that can handle that capacity that's been determined as they went through planning.
Yes ma'am.
But yeah, the developers paid for it.
Yeah, the developers are paying to hook them onto the main trunk line, and the stations get it on the main, but the main trunk lines can handle that capacity. Where we're having trou, problems is downtown.
No, where you having problems is Danielsville Nowhere Road and all those outside.
The periphery at all, but there's also a whole lot of acquisition costs, like that's where you're gonna talk about.
I'm moving in my district.
Yeah.
And, and they're moving big time in my district, and like I said, the developers are picking up the cost for their new developments, but it leaves the people who've been there in, in limbo, that's what I'm saying.
And that, and, and, that's not y'all's fault.
No, it's not y'all's fault. No, 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 I'm sorry, I wasn't blaming you.
It's not y'all's fault, that's, it's coming on us, as elected official, we need to look at that, how do we extend that out? The residents that are living, that's already living there, so that's, that's all I'm saying.
No, it's not just.
There's no knock on you guys at all.
No.
We gonna have to look at it, as elected.
And if I don't keep bringing it up, it's not gonna happen, that's, that's what we're saying, it's not gonna happen, so it's not your fault.
Yeah.
Thirty-five years ago, I'm sure it was okay, but folk are looking now to, to, to benefit with the charter promise, and it never happened.
Well, we, we, we'll move on.
We'll move on. I got, this, this, fast, fast and fast. I would like us to eventually get to the conversation where we say, that's enough. There's enough growth in the downtown area, we can say this is enough in this space. It, it's, it's just, you, you know, we owe it to our, all of our respective residents that we represent to improve their quality of life. And if we're always foc, focusing on the transient people that lived here for four years, and, and a lot of them more, but we, we have children, we have, we, uh, support the public schools, we pay our taxes every day, not just on game weekends. And I think that we should, you know, one day, say, is there's enough people downtown, there's enough people in this area. We don't have to continue making concessions and expanding spaces and widening areas and knocking down stuff to accommodate, you know, a transient population, and to support Commissioner Lee's, consistent comments about just not having any partnership in that. Just because someone increases the capacity for their, um, attendance and their acceptance, that is not incumbent on us to meet that demand. That actually could help us create a conversation. If you're going to increase enrollment by three thousand people, let's have a conversation. That may be the way we get into that, that, into that office and have that conversation. And, uh, like Commissioner Lee says, and share those services costs. That's all I got, yeah, I'm, for real.
These are the, the sub-basins, uh, in the service delivery plan, the blue is the areas that are outside of the gravity service area. So that's, uh, Mr. Thornton, you're talking about what, what we could and couldn't do, and that, that's gonna require a lift stations, or even like the small package plants I was talking about, and those millions upon millions of dollars.
Lift stations, or, or what was the last one you said?
Okay, a small treatment facility.
Oh, okay.
You know, when you, when you talk about, you, you were mentioning Nowhere Road, uh, that would be a Sandy Creek Basin sewer system that require some kind of mechanical device to get it through the gravity system.
And a Sandy Creek is gonna be like thirty-five million dollars to build.
Oh, that wouldn't, that, I don't think that'd get us started.
A lot of property, I think, eminent domain involved in that kind of project, so that's.
So, following up on that in a very general way for this, because I know this comes up at the future land discussion. And, um, you know, I, I, in my mind, it's the cost of this, and I don't know if there's any way that we as commissioners can know some ballpark figures of costs. If you're going into some area that wasn't in the gravity service area, um, you know, so that when we're talking about going forward, I mean, we might be going, oh, that's a great idea, there might be isolated pockets where we could, but how much money would that be? And so that would, I mean, just for the community discussions, because I know I hear a lot of people saying that too, and talking about the future land use, you know, let's have a little bit more here or there. And for us to do our part, making that branch, you know, that root system, how much does that even cost? Cause I, from what I'm getting from you guys, it's on the other, the other, one of those other maps here, maybe you passed it. You know, the place where all the weaknesses are in the system that, so for me, I'm seeing like, oh, we got all this stuff we gotta fix. You know, and, and how much, but even, just even knowing what the comparable costs are, because the future land use, you know, we can talk about it and say we're gonna build it up there, but how much would it be, and how would we go about it?
Well, I just even think, again, and I think Kelly alluded to it, uh, or maybe she did, about this was not, you, you know, people, past commission did not even want that type of thing. So, um, you can't blame it on the department if the past commission was not interested. So now at least we're talking about it, we're looking at it and seeing what could be possible. But if you had a commission in the past that were, was not interested, I get it. But this commission hopefully is interested in reaching those areas that, you know, weren't popular before.
I know that we've stood up in front of the commission maybe two or three times about Sandy Creek, and we were told never to bring it back.
Oh, if I, I really want to retire. We were told, Neil, don't bring it back, if you want to continue your work here.
Same with Shaw Creek.
Hmm. And so maybe as we're going on, you know, as we're doing this, maybe the dollar amounts, what it would look like if we did continue down that path, cause the dollar amount is the, definitely is most important.
Yes ma'am, and then, I, I would like, you know, we talked about the future land use maps and developers installing sanitary sewer. You know, uh, I would like to, we did the Upper North O'Conne two B and two C project. That was in our service to their, twenty twenty service to their plan. It was actually in, probably in our ninety-five, two thousand service to their plan.
For sure.
Cause we started at the plant, worked our way all the way out there to the top of the line manhole, which is at Newton Bridge Road. Y'all approved that D R Horton, or the commissioner approved, that D R Horton development on Newton Bridge Road. That's a reflect because we did those Upper North O'Conne projects, they had to wait for us to get done for that. But they're going with the way we expect that lift station. They don't build that lift station big enough that people can expand, they, you know, if people in Saxon Woods want to tile on sanitary sewer, that will now be available.
Right.
So once the developer builds those lines, puts those, puts that infrastructure in, they turn that over to us to maintain, we take all that cost, so it's kind of a partnership already.
Okay.
The customer has to pay the connection fees to tile on the sewer, that gives us the funding and availability. You know, plus with the, the water and sewer bills every month, to be able to take that maintenance and upkeep on. Uh, but that, that lift station with that D R Horton home project is gonna open sanitary sewer up to a lot of people in that area that otherwise would not have had sanitary sewer. So it's, while it's not an official, I guess, agreement on paper, it's kind of the way it works, it's kind of the process.
Yeah, and you need it afterwards.
To do business, yes ma'am.
So my district choose, I won't complain about that one.
And I think we started in about two thousand and five, we're building the Upper North O'Conne.
Oh yeah.
And it finished in twenty-two, so seventeen years.
And, and the Trail Creek line, which it got us as far out as we could go down Danielsville Road. And the, the way it navigated getting there was utilizing twenty-nine, coming along Trail Creek. Uh, but the, the availability is there now, and I've seen, I saw a couple of plants, uh, housing communities that developers would design, it's gonna come up off of that line, so there's gonna be some homes out there now in the Danielsville corridor, that's actually going to have sanitary sewer. Problem is, once you get to Danielsville Road, we serve the school.
How's drive?
School, to, to graphically, that's the best we can do. Everything starts falling off from there. We're a gravity system, so if you go to Nowhere Road, or you try to go on out towards Norwood, out Danielsville Road, it's downhill. You know, driving it, it kind of doesn't look like it, but when you go out there with a gray rod instrument, and you start taking shots and elevations, all that's falling off. So you would actually have to find a lower point on out, away from Danielsville Road, to build a mechanical device to pump it back to something. Cause gravity wise, you would want it to fall, you'd want it to start falling that way, get to that lowest point, be able to pump it back. So you're talking about building lift stations, or like I said, the small package plants in areas that top graphically are gonna be a long ways away from like Nowhere Road.
Okay, questions? So on Freeman Drive.
People.
So how did they, how did they, um, manage their water system? The cottages are up.
The people hope the lift station is not in yet.
Okay, the cottages are up now, though.
Are they, they moving in them?
They're up, they're up.
They haven't been out there, I know, I know that lift station.
So they're using a lift station?
They will, yes ma'am.
Okay.
They, uh, the.
And if they do a lift station.
Can we hook in?
Can, can.
Hope Village, no, we both.
There's two different hopes, there's one Hope, one thirty-nine, and then there's Hope Village, and they're both on Freeman. So if one thirty-nine has the lift station, can Hope Village?
I, I, I can't answer that question because the people hope, that lift station happened when the, uh, Campus Lodge folks balled out, the Troy Park on Fifth Avenue. That lift station, the, the live well for that lift station, all that was installed prior to Public Utilities having a lift station specification, cause we wouldn't know, they weren't.
Think to that for us?
I can have engineering do that, yes ma'am.
I would like to know that, because there, the cottages are up, pretty much are, but I didn't see no lift station development.
The, the lift station is sitting in the woods, uh, I think Freeman Drive, that it's got a main that goes up Freeman Drive, and it ties into a manhole up there at Danielsville Road.
Yeah.
Hill Drive.
I went out there, I saw the main, that was the main out there.
Okay, if, well, I'll let you.
But, but I'm pretty sure that that station was only sized. I'm, I'm really sure that, well, you know, I don't have the facts in front of me, but I can have engineering look it up. But since that was built so early on, and it was just for that project, I'm sure that lift station was just sized for that project. It couldn't take any other development to it.
Okay.
Cause it, everything was centered around the people hope, when they, they installed that live well for that lift station.
Okay.
And did the pumping and everything, that's, and, and that's an example of why we're doing it, what we're doing.
I got you, okay.
Yeah, let's keep it moving.
Yeah.
Try to help you.
Where's your church?
I'm gonna keep myself in the way.
Yeah, so the, so the next six slides, if we want to keep it moving, are the priority based on, so priority one is public health, right? Or regulatory stuff, right? And so they're just, it's just listing the projects that are gonna be in the twenty twenty-five service delivery plan by category. And then by priority within that category, also broken into water system and wastewater system, and the total for that. So I, I don't think we need to read, read them all to you, you've, you've got them in your packet, right? Um, so the next one is the public health initiatives, which is the alternate sewer systems. And we've got the rehabilitation, um, replacement projects, split into water, and then wastewater, you'll know there's a lot more wastewater than water projects. Those are the wastewater ones, it's in two slides, maybe three slides, so.
Did you go back to the one you, like, you were listening? I'm looking at, I'm, I was just looking at the statistic. The service delivery plan is, that's you, right?
Every five years, do you get these projects done within that timeframe, most of them with, within the timeframe?
We don't get them done, no ma'am, uh, as, as with anything that's growing and continuing, things change. You know, emergency pipeline, you know, something unforeseen happens, we'll have to direct those funds to fix that line, so we're not sanitary sewer and state water. Obviously, our goal here is to protect the public health and safety.
And I would also add that the there's purposefully more projects than you can possibly get done in five years because it's a twenty-year look ahead.
Okay, so this is just over time.
Over time.
For this five years.
If we didn't have.
You want to accomplish going forward. And this is what, the time we have to work on it.
Right. And, and, and there was a slide earlier that said twenty twenty. Those are what they completed between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-five or, or in, or they're.
In ongoing.
Progress right now. In progress right now.
Okay.
And so you'll see that like they got, I think you totaled them all up. I think it was like a hundred and twenty million dollars, you know, kind of thing. And so over five years is a pretty good clip, right? Um, so if you keep going, then the next ones are.
Thornton, you good now?
I'm good, I'm good.
Sorry. Or the expansions, which is the next one. Um, and then priority five are the extensions. And then priority six are the strategic plan ones, which is basically solar, right? At, at our facilities. So.
To our next.
Yeah, yeah, next steps.
There's that estimated price tag.
So quick question.
Yes, sir.
Situation like these. I know we got the enterprise fund, but do we, you know, are there grants and stuff that we could apply for to get, uh, we're not sure what's going to have on the federal level, but are there grants or even at the state level that we may can get to help with some of these type of projects?
We, we have, we've looked into some of those, like the generator at Cedar Creek that was up there. We, uh, we're in the process. Y'all, y'all approved, the commission body approved for us to go after that grant. We're in the process of trying to get it right now. Of course, with the, the changes that have happened at the federal level, I don't know how much longer.
I do know in this past budget session, governor had put out close to a billion dollars for infrastructure stuff. Don't know whether we were qualified for those. I know Commissioner Thornton now told some of the legislators before the session start, if we knew some of this was going to be coming up, that, that may be some files available for local counties to, to have some of that with monies.
So back in twenty ten to twenty twelve-ish timeframe, um, we used, um, ARRA monies. Okay, um, we got the maximum you could get for that. Um, we also use SRF funds, state revolving funds, um, which are basically low interest loans and things, um, to, to fund things. In fact, I think you guys just went through a redoing of some of your lines.
Yeah, y'all.
So there, there, there are ultimate things out there and they've got a consulting firm, Stan Tech, that's helping them with the rates. And Stan Tech will be, will be looking at that. It's part of their due diligence.
And that's a bullet point. This slide is, uh, Stan Tech looking at our recommended rates with affordability. And then I always put this slide in there and I'm not really sure.
You may have been trying to tie it to the, basically looking at affordability with, within your rates and tying it to the fact that we have a high poverty level.
Yeah.
And how important that is. Okay, but you're not here to answer the questions. We are quite sure.
I do know, I do know in our conversations with Stan Tech is the affordability. You know, we don't want people to start paying water sewer bills that they don't, they're not going to have the budget to pay. So we want to look after the citizens of this community and try to keep those rates as low as we can. The last increases that we've been asking for have been below uh, what the other municipalities in our area have asked for. And I think we presented a graph to y'all. That shows that we're way on left side scale and, and what we charge uniform water sewer rates. We would really like for it to stay there. But as things, as you can see with the numbers associated with service delivery plan, with the age of our systems, the projects that we need to take on, y'all want us to expand and do things. It's going to be a very significant amount of funding that's going to take. Just with the quarry project that I brought in a couple of months ago, that Mr. Thornton alluded to. Adds some of that, that price tag alone is very, very high. So we're, we're trying to incorporate this stuff. That's why we only included the design for the quarry in this service delivery plan.
This one, Commissioner Johnson, that kind of Commissioner Lake.
So I learned last year that county purchased the quarry. And I don't know that much about it. So I have a generic question and, and maybe through some understanding with your explanation, I can think of what I'm trying to understand. But I have, how would the quarry offset the costs to do these type of improvements? Or what the motivation for purchasing the quarry was and how does that tie into?
Yeah, the motivation for purchasing the quarry was water resiliency. We wanted to have that water for the citizens of our community. It really didn't have a monetary aspect to it. It's to, we want to have the water to serve the community. Uh, we, we've got extensive studies on the droughts that have occurred. And we were really close to running out of water. And it's a scary thing because we sharing it with Jackson County and Barrow.
Good presentations on it. Maybe you could forward them to, to Stephanie and because we did have her as a good, good slide presentation that really explained it.
But now we, we do collect royalties.
That's right.
From having the, yes, Hightower, Hanson, uh, they're paying us royalties to keep mining. What we, we brought to y'all a while back was to continue that operation through twenty forty-five. Have dual operations where we're collecting those royalties, which would be monies coming in to help fund these projects.
So it would offset some of this.
It would.
Yeah, they're, and they're making the hole bigger. You're excited. Okay, well, they are. They're making the hole bigger.
Okay.
Like quarrying out the, the stuff, right?
Yeah, I was going to ask when you, before you said that, I was going to actually ask if, um, Patrick said something to make me think about it, like how we're sharing, um, water. The, the, the water we, now it's, um, I think two other counties. Would we ever consider selling water from the quarry to other municipalities? Is that, is that, is that doable? I mean, as a, as a revenue generator?
Where it's located, I don't think it's doable. What may be doable is furnished, finished water.
Okay.
To the counties. But when you start talking about doing things like that, you have to look at the federal regulation, uh, regulations and what their mix would be.
Oh, and you know that better.
Depending on how they treat water versus how we treat water. I know it, I know it sounds funny, but you can't just fix the two waters.
It does, it does make sense.
But you could also, you could, government could, Adams County could use the quarry. And Bear Creek could be made available. Your, your portion of Bear Creek could be made, made available to the other three member governments.
We take less of our share.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Share, your share could be, sell it to other ones. Right? So there's.
Yeah, that's a good idea. To like offset some of, to bring it, to bring this cost down.
We'll be looking at that with our consultant.
Great suggestion.
Commissioner Lake.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, um, septic tanks real quick. When I was on the health department board, um, I got very, very educated about the septic tank issue and, um, you know, a lot of these tanks, their lives are shortened by the fact that the folks that own them are not getting them pumped regularly. Um, so there's a lot of education that needs, and we had a member on our, our board that didn't even realize, you know, her barely new home was on a septic system and that, that was the thing that she was supposed to do. And it's not expensive to get a pumped, um, you know, I had it done for my family's property up north a couple of years ago. It's like three hundred bucks. You know, people pay that much in a few months for sewer fees. So there's, there's, but the state of Georgia does not allow us to require it. It's kind of like a property infringement according to state law or constitution. Um, so there's really a lot more education we could do to some of those folks that are in those areas that are on septic. Um, right now, you're not allowed to build a home on septic unless it has the capacity to, you know, build a second septic tank fifty years down the line if one fails. So, um, there's just a lot of like, not just misinformation, but like zero information out there among folks that might be on septic systems. And, and maybe we, I, I would love to see us come up with a, some kind of assistance program to help some of these folks get those tanks pumped.
So the twenty twenty-five serves for next five years, you're, you're looking for five hundred and fifteen million or what is?
That's, that's the projected cost of those projects. We're, you know, we're using the, the enterprise fund, the money that we have now to, to build these projects. So we'll be coming to you, you know, to approve the projects.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not asking today for five hundred and fifteen million dollars.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but that five hundred and fifty-eight million captures that whole area out here.
What was, what is the royalty, annual royalty payment that you get to, I would, you know, I would like to do math.
I, I, I don't know that. Uh, I'd have to try to find it.
I'm good, I like.
You need to not forget that there's, that's offset. You know, and that's, it's not five hundred and eighty, it's, you know.
It's, it's based on how much is sold. So it's not a lot of number.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to be, it's not going to be five million dollars a year.
Oh, no, no, I don't, I didn't expect that. But do they pay a lease too?
I don't think so. I think it's just a royalty. That's all been worked out. Uh, the, and the negotiations.
They have a lease out there. Do we have a lease with it, y'all? But.
Pay the rules, royalties.
Now, the royalty and the lease are same or they're different?
Between what?
Each other.
Do, are they paying for a lease and for royalties?
Yeah, they're playing, they play a lease payment, I believe, and royalties.
Okay.
That's what I thought. That makes sense.
I know that's how you know how, but the rock, the royalty depending on how much rock they've got there.
I understand. It's just a doubt.
But that'd be a offset.
Any other questions?
Thank you for having me out. On my, um, my situation in my district. There's certainly much. And, um, you used to be water wise, right? Did you ever do, okay. Sorry. Do you know if, if people are using more water now? You know, in my department or actually our water conservation department is doing a great job. It's almost a, uh, it's almost a catch twenty-two for them to do such a great job. The less water they, that our citizens, the community use, then less revenue we bring in and do these projects. So, but there, we are, we're using less water today than, than the citizens, you know, five years ago.
But also that's a lower burden on, on the infrastructure because they're using it less.
Yes, ma'am.
Extend the life.
I just wanted to say one real quick thing about septic education. Just years ago, there was, we got some grant funding to do septic education, kind of a departmental thing. So there's a lot of resources at ACC.gov.com slash septic. About, at that time is about twenty-five percent, I think, of, of folks. And it was based around the idea of having people pump their, there's a lot of factors that go into it, but it pump about every three to five years on average from that. And so if you come across folks that, that need that information, we have that there. We'll do some periodic times where we do put that information, uh, out as we can. Uh, but that, a lot of that information does exist. There's some good videos on how the process works. So people know what pumping entails and some things like that. So there is some of that out there a, a, available that, that we're able to pass on to people as well. I just wanted to mention that real quick.
Yeah, the health department knows for, I mean, we know where all the septic tanks are. It's just a matter of like getting that information to people. And it's amazing how many people are just.
Um, this question is for Sarah. Um, could she, could you send us, um, fund balance in each enterprise?
Right. Thank you all. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Wow, great day.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Dave.
Can I get a motion through the jar? Go on the jar. Thank you.